Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Spirit to sorrow, spirit to sorrow, agama nista. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Spirit to sorrow, spirit to sorrow, agama nista. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Spirit to sorrow, spirit to sorrow, agama nista. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, 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 holye. Holye, 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 holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Spirit to sorrow, spirit to sorrow, agama nista. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, 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 holye. Holye, 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 holye. 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 Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Spirit to sorrow, spirit to sorrow, agama nista. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Spirit to sorrow, spirit to sorrow, agama nista. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, 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 holye. Holye, 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 holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Spirit to sorrow, spirit to sorrow, agama nista. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. 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 Holye, 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 holye. Holye, 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 holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Spirit to sorrow, spirit to sorrow, agama nista. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, 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 holye. 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 Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Spirit to sorrow, spirit to sorrow, agama nista. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, we shall have holye, holye. Holye, 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 holye.
Good morning, or good afternoon, good evening, I don't know what day it is, okay. Welcome to the special meeting on July 9th, study session on Recreation Center Schematic Design. Roll call please.
All council members are present.
Okay, can you have staff report?
Good evening Mayor and council members, I'll be bringing Dawn from Group 4 Consulting Up to give you some next steps of where we're at on schematic design for the Recreation Center.
I'm on the side. There safely.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, pleased to be here tonight, and I'm actually just up here for the first slide before I come back. What we have for you is basically an update on the site design, and James Ingles from RHAA, our landscape architect, is going to lead that presentation, and then I'll come back where I'll give you the update on the building design, look at exterior finishes, we've brought those back to you, have samples in front of you, as well as mockups of different sizes up on the wall for you to consider, and then looking at the floor plan, staff area, and the updated renderings for your consideration. So with that, I am going to hand it over to James.
Thank you Dawn. Thank you council. As mentioned, I'm James Ingles from RHAA Landscape Architects, and we've been working on the site plan and some of the improvements of that, and want to walk you through that. I thought I'd briefly kind of go through the overall site plan, and again, get everyone acquainted with that. Let me kind of, what's the best way here for me? Maybe not. And let's see, are you primarily looking at this monitor? All right, I might just step back here and let's see.
You have to use the mic, please.
All right.
There's a hand mic too.
Two hands, boy, now you're going to challenge me.
We have it on our mouse.
Yes, if you use the mouse, you can actually show them things like this.
Okay, great, all right.
Can you angle it up more for you?
Yeah, I was trying. There we go. Okay. All right, so we'll just go through the numbers here, and I'll use the cursor to show you where those locations are. The recreation drop-off, some of these, most of these are pretty straightforward, but again, I'll walk through these. The drop-off area, so I get used to this. Entry plaza from the front door, in this area here. The paseo pathway, and again, that paseo is a series of the main pathway with unfolding rooms on both sides. The courtyard and specimen tree, again, where the building footprint was open and angled there, it canted, so it created more of a space there, and the specimen tree, and as we'll see, is kind of the furnishings also support that. Community room event terrace out here, and I think probably from the last time we met, we've pushed that out and gained a little bit more space, which was desired. The dry creek and stormwater feature, again, our site goes from left to right as it slopes down, and we're going to be capturing stormwater, rainwater, and making that more of a feature in this area. Preschool play yard up here. Bike parking, it's been a topic, we have three areas there, there's one here, there's some other parking down here, as you come down through the parking lot, and then also a small amount of parking over here in the drop-off area. The fitness terrace comes out of the fitness room, inside-outside relationship there, and we'll talk about some special paving treatment to help support that in some of the next slides. Administration staff and small terrace, that's on the north side here of the rec center, small terrace there where there'll be a small table and chairs, and then there's a secondary private entrance there that connects up to the drop-off into the parking area. The ramp access to the preschool and community room terrace, so that's again here on the north side where we can have a drop-off, you can either go up the stairs, or there's the ramp access that gets you up to the preschool area, and that will continue on and then provide access also to the, to the community terrace. The trash enclosure, that has expanded based upon, I think, dumpsters and so forth up in this area here, so you can have drop-off along Lincoln Circle, but you can also service it from the backside here. And some of the existing conditions here that we've tried to maintain are very important to the plan, we have a coast live oak tree in this area that's native, and when we're doing the stormwater basin treatment system, that's going to be critical for those two to work together. The oak trees ideally don't like a lot of water, so again, we're going to be kind of working around that. We have the existing redwoods on the north side of the tennis courts, which are really important, and because of creating the grades in ADA, we're, we've kind of made some minor revisions in this area to help support, I think, the grades and minimize our impact on those redwood trees. And then we also have a series, I think there's five ash trees that are quite mature in this area here, and these will need a little bit of cleaning up, pruning, but I think it's well worth keeping those now since we're kind of going with phase one and maintaining the exist, excuse me, existing parking lot. ADA parking, we have two ADA parking stalls in the existing parking area, and then we also have four new ones up here in the revised parking, parking lot. The main building entrance tucked in right here, and we talked about the ADA parking, and then also the access to Taylor Middle School and the ramp pathway that goes up and gets access up to there. Few things that's been added of late, the good neighbor fence along this north side of the parking area here, as well as now a decorative fence and small retaining wall here separating the rec center from the park corporation yard. And I think we've covered that, yes, so the neighbors preschool drop-off pickup, as mentioned, that's along Lincoln here, and they have direct access up to there with a gate, or you can use the ramp system there. So it's kind of a nutshell of, of that area, I think, again, just some other existing conditions, there's certainly some mature pine trees up here that we're evaluating and looking at that environmentally too, probably will, those will be removed in this first phase, and there is a few other existing trees here that we want to maintain, there's a coastal live oak, some bottle brush tree here that's high habitat value, and we may try to, we're going to try to save some of these elm trees in here too, between the fence, expanding the parking area so we can get our numbers, as well as respecting the neighbors, I think, we're going to try to at least save a few of those. I'm going to move on here unless there's any questions. Go forward here.
Any questions?
I have a comment. I really, I liked the landscape idea so far. The porch that we extended, the reason why we did that is so that we can, may provide another opportunity for community performances, so in order to do that, you need to have space, space for the audience. I do like the swell, the stormwater capture, I'm thinking that we can still accomplish that, but also provide space for, you know, seating in front of the stage, so, in the porch, so if you could accommodate that, I know that tree, therefore, that tree and its location would not be at the optimal location, so, that's, that's my comment. Councilwoman Snyder?
A couple of quick ones then, you mentioned specimen trees, and are those trees that conform with Millbrae's list of specimen trees, or our microclimate specimen trees? What was the thought there?
We'll get more into detail that, we'll talk about the planting, but generally, the specimen tree, it's more of just a call-out, that's nothing official that we're saying, the specimen tree is going to go in, it's a large tree, we've worked with some of the city staff on a tree that they would prefer, and that is an elm tree, and as mentioned, we'll talk about the planting in a few slides.
Okay, then the trees that we're planning on maintaining, are you recommending a maintenance plan right away, that we should start taking care of right away, especially as we enter a summer period?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, we've had, I think, informal discussions, certainly that the park staff is aware of the trees that we want to, that, that everyone is supporting to, to remain and protect. It really hasn't been where we've officially directed them to maintain those, but I think that can be brought up and, and shared with Ken, and make sure his staff is looking at these trees carefully.
I believe Mr. Crissetti is no longer with us, I believe he's retired.
Oh, okay, sorry to hear that.
Correct me, city manager, if I'm wrong?
Yes, that is correct.
So you'd be dealing with somebody new, as I would be all in favor of us coming up with a plan to try to protect them, so that what, what's happened to the trees on El Camino don't happen to them. My other question, for those that you're going to remove, are we going to mulch them on-site, are we going to use them on-site, are we just going to start walking our zero-waste talk on the solid waste? You, on the solid waste side, you talked about an expanded garbage enclosure, was that for any particular reason?
Yeah, I think it was working again with staff, and, and again, I'm kind of hearing this through Group 4, but based upon the number of dumpsters that is desired, that it needed to become slightly larger, so it could be, so it could function.
Well, and I'm sure staff is aware of this, but a new law has just been passed that 20% of edible food must be captured to be given to humans, which means that we have to change our space allocation inside the building, as well as how it might be processed outside.
Okay, wait a minute, let's stay on topic.
I'm on, I'm covering the things that he's talking about, I've got two more.
Okay, let's wait, let's stay, this is kind of keep it, I mean, let's keep that in mind.
I've got one more.
But let's just keep it landscape, just do the landscape now, and then we'll work on, on the...
He talked about the garbage enclosure, so I'm going to talk about the things that I'm going to talk about.
No, no, absolutely, but let's just stay on...
Okay, we've wasted more time doing this, my last one, I am again going to encourage us to consider putting in a retention pond underneath the swale while we're digging up the ground, even if that means that we go out and look for grant funding for that, that retention pond.
I like that.
Or retention container, retention container on that.
I would agree with that. Councilwoman Pappen?
There's a large tree, or somewhat of a tree, in the current circular part of the parking lot, is not salvageable, or what is that status of that tree?
That tree, I think, is going to be removed at this point.
It's not salvageable, or what's the story?
Based upon the Arbus report, and its value and its health, and I think the impacts around it, and the expansion of the footprint, it really is conflicting with the, the design.
Okay, throughout this process, I am concerned that we maintain, on the tree preservation part, a sufficient irrigation system, that we're not losing the trees during construction, so I'm not sure how you're going to go about that, but it is a big concern of mine, that we make sure that's included in the process.
And that is, we usually, there's a whole entire spec section on tree protection and preservation, and those trees, we do typically specify that they need additional water, additional mulching, fencing around them to protect from compaction, and that is usually always in our specifications and will be.
Yeah, well, whatever you can do to encourage the irrigation part of it, natural irrigation always better.
Right, whether it's hand watering, or the existing system to make sure that can function or operate.
I would prefer the existing, whatever system you can come up with.
Uh huh.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're going to go a little bit more into detail here, and one of the items was looking more at the hardscape finishes or paving systems here, and again, we've worked with Group 4 on these. The colored concrete, we've looked at, pretty much our paving materials is going to be concrete, looking at, at, and the opportunities that concrete can be, whether in color or imprinting, is going to be some of our more premium treatments, and then we will also have standard concrete. The colored concrete are the areas A there, which is the paseo, that arcing area with the darker area there, and we're looking at being, working with the, the building colors and being compatible with that, and so we're looking right now at some brown and tan colors that can be used, and, and mixing that up, again, to create some, some interest there, as you can see schematically, kind of how some of the bands and patterns work within the paseo itself there. And some of the more special areas too, we're looking at doing some stamped concrete, and stamped concrete can be done really well, and it can be done really lousy, but we're looking at, in a few special areas where it could be done, and, and we're, we're kind of looking at more of a subtle kind of wood imprint, that, that could give a nice texture there, that would be a spell-out space for the fitness terrace, as well as for the community And then finally, we have standard concrete that will be primarily for the, the perimeter areas coming from Taylor Middle School around the parking areas, that will be your, your standard concrete. And there's discussion at this point, certainly up in the preschool play area, of, of an interest of having a small piece of play equipment and the surfacing that would be involved there, and there's really three choices, there's synthetic turf, there is rubber safety surfacing, and then there's rubber tiles that interlock, and I know, we've been talking with all three of those options at this point, it kind of will depend on kind of the size and so forth, but I think we're leaning towards synthetic surfacing at this point.
Mr. Mayor? I'm curious, because we can't constantly, park and rec is always, new laws are changing, so whatever the current law is as to the playground surface, I'm hoping you will be consistent with along those lines.
Yes, yeah, and the synthetic, again, depending on the play equipment, the type of padding that you need, and for this too, I know synthetic turf, there is issues with the infill, for the players, you don't need to have infill, so that's one of the bigger issues, I think, with the safety concerns and, and the rubber, so there would not be any kind of rubber infill with the synthetic.
Question, you said stamped concrete, and you said like a textured?
Yes.
I prefer, and always keeping in mind if this area, we hope, will be used for entertainment value, women with high heels, nothing too deep, it really messes up my high heels, so anything you can do to preserve them is greatly appreciated, and then, I'm curious about the cement or the land, the cement, concrete covering here, what, environmentally speaking, I don't know, is it, you go lighter to prevent the escape, can you educate me on that, please?
Yeah, and I don't deal with this on a day-to-day, it's, there is a reflectance, and ideally, depending on if you're interested in lead and so forth, the lighter the color, the more reflection you get, and less heating of the earth, so lighter colors are desired if you're looking at, at lead, there is a mixture here, and, and we can consider that, but I think the main point, what we want to do with the colored concrete is, is having maybe two different colors, so we can have contrast and create some interest there.
I know, I appreciate that, so whatever surfacing you're using in the parking area too, we are interested in lead, and we do have the global warming thing, so whatever we can do to accommodate that would be appreciated, thank you.
Okay, so we have half an hour left, so let's just do, go, run through the presentation, and we'll ask the questions, and then, and we'll open all the questions up, okay? Great, thanks.
All right, I'll keep moving here, and again, we've looked at, at seating, there's really three main areas for the seating, the paseo that runs that large arc, we have a wide seat wall area there that would be either precast or port-in-place concrete there that would be wide and be very multifunctional, see kind of an image of that in the upper right, again, some of the other seating materials, we're looking at wood benches at this, wood for warmth and kind of more friendliness, and then certainly where our specimen tree, I'll call it a specimen tree there, and the gathering of the courtyard here where we have a circular bench that is around that tree. Out here in the front, I think we have a bench here, but we also have some concrete in these precast forms here that would also be retaining earth, but also informal places to sit there, waiting to get picked up. to sit there, waiting to get picked up or dropped off. And planting here. So trees, we have quite a variety here, and that's been working with park staff. And so the trees that we've at least selected at this point, there is a criteria certainly for the tolerance, looking at the wind conditions and the other climate conditions here, as well as giving a variety. Again, we've talked about the existing trees that are very important, the live oak, the redwoods, the bottle brush and the ash trees. We're supporting that with a series of other trees here, a wide variety. I can go through all of these, but generally, we have, I think, a really good mixture. We're looking at the wind conditions is very important. The Chinese pistachio tree has a lot of color, and again, wind conditions. We have the London plane tree that you certainly have here in Millbrae, just south of the park itself. Some native trees as far as the red bud and the strawberry tree. And then we have some, again, other interest trees where we have the evergreen, the olive that is fruitless, the manzanita that is kind of a sister to the strawberry tree, and the Chinese elm in the lower right there, which is, at this point, we've been working with staff on a very special specimen tree. It has a light shade, and the leaves are small. It does have a little bit of a fall yellow color, and would, good to support that courtyard area that encompassed that. And then, kind of broad brush here, as far as kind of the, more the understory of the ground plane, we have several areas here. We have the yellow areas here that really enhance with movement and seasonal accent color, and really, that would be a lot of like what the City Hall just did in refurbishing and putting in the new landscape out front there, where you have do movement with the sedges and the grasses, and some accent colors, I think, are very effective. So that's more here in the yellow. We have the creeping red fescue in bold, more of kind of a meadow-like, rough meadow. Look here, and underneath the ash trees here, we have perimeter shrub planting, and, I'm sorry, I'm kind of moving forward here, but we have premium shrub planting here, which is more of kind of foundation plantings of primarily shrubs that are anywhere from two to five feet that can spread out and support kind of those larger open areas. The seaanothis, the little ollie olive, toyon, again, these are primarily all native plants also that we've selected. The dry creek and stormwater planting, again, supporting where they would have wet feet during portions of the year. Usually that soil is well-drained, so they need to handle very dry conditions as well as wet conditions there. And then a few areas here where we have some screen planting. Again, we have the existing parking area, and we have, where the rec center kind of opens up to that. So it's really going to be important that we have our tree planting as well as our lower story planting that will help create a buffer in that area. And that, I think, is it kind of for planting. Come back, I think, after the presentation in the building for any questions.
All right, thanks, James. Okay, so basically, as I mentioned, wanting to give you an update on the exterior materials, specifically, specifically the stone, sorry about that. And what we're showing on the screen is what you saw about two months ago with the two-inch stone, the Vegas stone. And what we've brought for you tonight is variations on that. So we've shown up on the wall here, different options for that. One is a four-inch, which is the bottom one in the plank format, and then a six-inch, which is the top one, as well in the plank format. So wanting to get your input on your preference for that, and we've got renderings to display those options. And so here it is shown with the two inches, what you saw previously, a little bit more residential in scale, we thought. And so looking at a four-inch, kind of gives it a little bit bigger scale than the residential. It still has nice proportions, still really relates. As one of the reasons the stone was chosen is that reminiscent of the civic center here, and as you look at the brick behind you, you can kind of gauge it with the color of the stone, the proportions of the stone, and kind of wanting to tie in to be reminiscent of the civic center, but have its own character as it's in the park. Here is the four-inch stone, and again, in the plank. So that's what we got, the two-inch and the four-inch. And so as we're looking at the exterior material selection, we got your input last time on the stucco color or the eaves colors, that we're showing eaves one and eaves two. And again, those colors are right there in front of you. The eaves one is the lighter color, that's closest to Gina there. The eaves two is the second color, and you can see how it nicely picks up the colors in the stone. We're looking at the wood look soffit, metal material is shown there on, as you're looking at it, your bottom left, as well as the metal mullions for the windows and doors is shown in kind of the warm brown color, all shown with the stone colors there as well as the glass color. Updates for you on the floor plan, very consistent with what you saw last time, working closely with staff to add some additional functionality, both to the preschool with, by adding a staff restroom within the preschool. So staff in the rest, in the preschool do not have to leave the preschool secure area to have restroom access for the adults, as well as working closely with recreation staff to work out the functionality of the staff space with workstations, visibility and surveillance through to the front counter. Those are really the refinements that we've been working through, very similar to what you saw last time and previously with the lobby to the left, staff room right there, preschool across the hall. We have the game room, which then moves to the fitness studio, preschool yard with glazing and connections indoor/outdoor on the hallway side, as well as the indoor/outdoor connection from the fitness to the fitness plaza or deck that James mentioned. Support spaces with restrooms, the kitchen, which has access from the hallway as well as to the exterior, directly adjacent to the trash enclosure, which size has been adjusted to accommodate all the different recycling modes that we need to include in the trash enclosure, as well as the community hall, which is divisible into three and opens out to the community patio. As we move up the stairs or the elevator, we have the conference room, and then also on what I'll call the north side or the upside of the plan is the art room, and then the senior lounge with an adjacent conference room, restrooms, all opening up to the outdoor patio, which is also then connected to the larger classroom suite, which is both divisible and can operate as one. So those are all consistent with the previous plans. And then just summarizing our next steps, Park and Rec Commission is next, Tuesday? Wednesday? With Planning Commission on Tuesday?
Monday.
Monday and Tuesday. Sorry about Planning Commission Monday, Park and Rec Tuesday, and then coming back for final acceptance in September. But tonight, really, for the building, what we brought back for your consideration was the configuration of the stone and the different sizes of the stone for your input. So with that, either James or I are happy to answer questions.
Okay, I think you want some answers, you want some opinions, too, on the slate, right?
The stone, yes, the Vegas stone. That's what, wanting your input on the scale of the stone, the two-inch, the four-inch, or the six-inch.
Okay, let's start with that, and then we'll move on to other parts.
I think the larger stone stands well for the large building.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, all right. I think you have your consensus.
Although, I don't see a, I don't see a six-inch option.
So it's on the wall here. Yeah, so sorry about that. The sample could still be in my car.
Okay.
But this is basically exactly what it looks like there.
And your trash can closure?
No, no, this is, the PowerPoint presentation, page 14, uses, it's showing sort of the backside of the building, and it's showing a gray material.
Your mic?
Okay, on page 14, which isn't in that presentation and isn't in the printed packet, it's only in the PowerPoint. Is it that gray? Because to me, that looks very institutional.
No, so that's why we bring the real sample colors for you.
Okay, to me, that looks like Aragon High School before it got remodeled, or Mills High School.
Yeah, so the color selection on the computer and how it shows on every different screen is different, and so that's why it's really important for us to bring the color samples.
So which one is it going to be?
So it's that light gray one? That's a lot of space there that looks...
Let's use one.
So which, which colors?
There's two colors.
Again, to go to the mic.
The darker color.
Sorry, I had to use the mic for the audience. I'm sorry.
I guess it is an institutional building, it just...
So the building has the two colors that we're proposing. So the lighter color is right here, and that's kind of the more public spaces, the higher volumes, where it's the staff bar. We've switched it to this darker color that you see here, so that is eaves two, as we've coating it. And if it's just a little too dark, that's certainly something that can be adjusted.
Actually, I don't mind the dark. I mind the light gray on a foggy day when it's gloomy out.
This color here.
It's just, when I looked at this picture, it looked like three tones of gray. So that's just the coloring, okay.
This color. So I apologize for the technology, but, and that's why we brought the actual paint samples. And you can see how it complements and ties into the stone and why it was chosen for that.
Any other comments from Councilwoman Leva?
Oh, I think that looks really warm. I like it a lot.
Any comments about the design layout?
No.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I don't think so.
Okay, Councilman Snyder?
The staff restroom right next to the childcare center. I'm sure staff has thought about that in terms of protection of children.
So the staff restroom that is only accessible from the preschool side is for preschool staff. There is no door connecting the preschool space to the staff space. There is a restroom, a staff restroom for preschool staff in the preschool room, so that they do not have to leave the children unattended and have to have additional support come in while they use the restroom.
We, we met with a couple of potential operators, and that was a suggestion from them. Otherwise, they would use the kind of public restrooms, which were down the hall, so that separate takes, you know, an attendant or a teacher out of the room. I mean, they're in the room to go to the restroom, they're away, but it's a further distance.
As long as we've done our due diligence to make sure that the children are protected.
Yeah, and the children have a separate restroom. By law, the children have a separate restroom is why there's a smaller restroom for that.
Question?
Please.
The preschool playground looks pretty big there. Did we lose some building space in order to accommodate that?
The preschool play yard is same square footage as it has been, and it's actually for licensing requirements, it's based on number of students and square footage per student. So it's the same square footage. We have not lost building space for that.
And what number of students are we looking to accommodate?
I think each classroom is looking at for, size for 20 is my recollection, 18 to 20.
24.
24, thank you, McKinsey.
And...
It's 48 kids total.
Okay, and...
And I think it's 50 square feet per child for outdoor space.
And so that, that's actually just...
That's okay, too much detail at this point. Moving on, your metals there on the board, can you show us where those will be and which do we have to choose from, or how's this working?
No, no, so we just pick colors and metals that complement the stucco and the stone. And so when you look up at the underside of the roof here, which is called the soffit, and you can see it out here, it will be the wood tone pattern that you see right there.
Can somebody pull those off so we can actually see them?
And so the soffit is, again, the wood tone pattern that goes up here and continues from the underside of the roofing with the large overhang. The metal that you're seeing is the color of the window mullions that you're seeing holding the glazing in for the windows, that's, and the doors. And so just like the metal on these doors is kind of the peach color, all of our doors and windows will be the brown color of the metal that you see.
I like the dark accent. Thinking the soffit, I'd be curious to see something that's a little darker there, to have a richer content, and make the building itself look richer. That's just, I'd be curious to see that, because we do want this to be something. Thank you.
I was kind of surprised that the porch was going to be all concrete. I didn't expect that. I thought it was going to be kind of a wood...
Which porch?
The porch out in the main, on the east side.
Yeah, so the maintenance for wood in a public space like that is probably little more than what you would want for the public facility, I think, with the stamping of the wood pattern on the exterior there, as well as on the fitness patio. That's kind of that nice compromise. I think we've all seen the new tiles that they come out with that are simulated wood, and so it's kind of, that's not wood anymore, but it's got that nice grain and texture, which is more friendly than concrete, and that, I think, is the intent with the pattern that's being stamped in the patio there.
Yeah, I think it's a nice aesthetics. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to, if it's going to be a concrete structure that maybe we can also make it like a retention tank for runoff, for roof runoff, so we can...
Permeable, you mean?
Yeah.
It's...
Well, not permeable, but...
That it would drain into...
Maybe there's some rainwater retention tank underneath.
It could be, but it could be designed like that, with a slope, with a funnel.
So currently, that is not in the budget, and we have strict directions from your city manager to maintain our current budget. We can always look at alternates that might be added to the bid documents to complement other sustainable strategies, like detention basins underneath or holding, they have silver cells and things like that that we potentially could add as an alternate if council so desires.
Point of reference?
Yes.
Group 4 was hired for their ability to get grants, and you've done well so far. We agree that we need to stay in the current budget, but if items like this could be supplemented in such a way without increasing the price tag, it would be greatly appreciated.
Well, we can certainly research it.
Yeah, I think we've been pretty aggressive working with the Civil on water that's captured on site, that is going into all the planting areas. Now, looking at the roof systems, I don't think we've done that as far as capturing that water and detaining it or reuse. And again, I don't think, budget, but it can be looked at.
And if I might point out, we have certain county-wide agencies and state agencies that are offering certain sustainability grants. We can put you in contact with them. We are agreed staying within the current budget, but if we can point you in the direction that might assist along these lines, we would like to do so.
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor?
There was a comment from the mayor earlier about the size. Did you say you wanted to make the patio larger than it currently is? Or you just take the tree out?
No, I, my comment was that the point of the larger patio, they did extend the patio from what it was before.
Yes.
And the reason why is because we wanted to make an opportunity for an additional outdoor performance space. So in order to make the most effective use of it, you need an opportunity for seating areas, so in front of the stage.
Are you suggesting like an amphitheater, or just like, you know, picnic tables, benches?
No, just, I think an open glade would be fine. You know, you can always put tables, I mean, chairs, whatever.
Just an open surface.
Yeah, open surface grass, open, glass, grass glade or whatever. You can still have a swell in the front, you know, like a little running river swell in the front, but I just make sure that there's some sort of space for...
Yeah, and so currently, the walls into the community hall open up onto the patio and create this real opportunity for an indoor/outdoor raised pl... and create this real opportunity for an indoor/outdoor raised platform to be used that goes both indoors and outdoors. There can be perimeter seating along the patio here. The enclosure for the patio actually is really just a small seat wall since we have the grade change. And so what's happening here is we're losing three to four feet as you come down that hill. I think if you go up there, you'll see that the hill actually falls off from this patio, and so it really doesn't lend its, it's kind of reverse what you want for that outdoor seating. But we certainly can have music out on the deck, and people will be able to be down in the meadow and be able to hear and see what's happening up a little bit higher, looking up towards it. It's kind of reverse.
This area right here is actually probably the most critical area, because we have the parking area that's up near the middle school, and we can only slope that so much, and then you're to the building where that is flat at this point. I know there was, the explorer at one time, of having two steps down. It may help in those grades, but we're, this area right here where we have the basin here is probably our most critical area, and we're, our grades that we're working with right now are probably the most extreme, that will maintain a stable bank that we can plant and isn't so too severe.
Okay. Thank you. And last, one last comment from...
Sorry, can I follow?
Yes.
Because I think we do want that, you mentioned if there's going to be performance or something, to have it extend out into the lower part of the park. I thought the reason for having the green space next to the patio is to create sort of a buffer between the patio and the park in case there's like a private event.
So it is, and so people cannot just walk right up through this onto the patio. And so there's a grade change. The planting is not friendly to walk through. It's kind of pebbly and grassy, and it's cleaning our water as it comes down through there. And so people are not going to be able to meander just straight up onto that deck. But if you had a band out on that deck and people were out in the meadow and you intentionally wanted to amplify it out, not so loud to bother the neighbors, but to share with the meadow, it's kind of a nice raised platform that you could look up to. So next time you're down in that bottom part of the park, look up where the patio would be, and you can kind of see what I'm talking about. It actually can be shared with the park, but the patio itself is more secluded and more semi-private associated with the community hall.
Okay. One last question I want to ask about the finance.
Have you begun to identify opportunities for public art?
We have, yes.
Okay. Will we see that in September, then?
We can certainly add that to the slide.
Because this area that we're talking about, if it's not intended for humans, it could have some fun art there. And if we could start identifying those opportunities, including in the preschool area for the murals, like where you took us to, there were some fabulous murals on there. And back to the garbage enclosure, I'm hoping that the garbage enclosure plan is going to include trellises on the outside or trellises on top, so it's actually a living wall and not a hardscape that the apartments are looking at. Obviously, where the doors have to open, where the trucks come in, but it could be very lush looking if we plan it that way.
Yes, and I think we can plant around it to accomplish that. The nice thing is where the garbage enclosure is, it's actually recessed back into this hill a little bit, so this ramp goes up. This is recessed into the hill, so we can actually plant right around it, then service it from the top and screen it from the bottom.
Excellent.
Councilwoman Pappin?
Yeah, real quickly, on the patio, that is going to be some of our bread and butter there. So if we can provide seedings along the wall, that would be important. Also, electrical aspects as far as heating and lighting goes. So if the wall itself has some lighting downward, it would enhance the patio. I think that would be good. And then the trees surrounding it there, you have a couple of big trees. If we could also ensure that there's some electrical at the base of those trees, that we could highlight them with a light at night, it would make it very elegant. That's my points.
Very nice. And also, on the same front, we should make sure we have enough electricals for today's, you know, electrical intensive usage. Okay, is there any, what I like to also see is timelines on where we are, because I'm kind of, don't know, you know, where we are in the process of getting this moved on and also...
Do you have something to add?
Yes.
Yeah, so I go by the old site frequently, and I saw that we still have signs on, around the fence of the timeline from last year and the design values phase and all of that. So if we're going to be putting out timelines and updates, can we get those updated as well?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we just talked about that this morning to get new signs ordered, too, in the area.
Okay. And also, yeah, and, you know, just we can broadcast or on our social media or website on what the timeline is. And also, what is the status in the financing now?
So as of right now, we have about $6.3 million in insurance. We have estimated $2 million in the property sale of the two assets that we'll be putting on the market. $2.8 million in developer contributions, $2.25 million in the land sale from the city-owned property to the BART project or to BART. So that's $13.3 million. And then we've solidified the funding availability of $14 million on a loan from the county. So that gets us to $27 million. That does not include approximately $3 million that was anticipated in contributions or a partnership with a licensed daycare operator. So that gets us right at $30 million. So that's really where we need to, we need to come in at.
Okay, so, thank you. That's a good summary. So I think that we need to really try to speed this up as soon as we can, so then the cost of construction doesn't eat us opportunities. So whatever we can do to expedite this process. Councilwoman?
And Mr. Mayor, along the funding sources here, the Millbrae Community Foundation is looking for an agreement. They have collected some funds to date, and we also discussed pursuing some sort of a donor wall or donor, public-private contributions in some way, shape, or form, and those have not yet been solidified, which we will hope add to the overall funding.
Okay, all right. So any last comments? We got two more minutes. None? All right. Thank you. So we'll adjourn the meeting to the next, to the next regular meeting.
So I forgot to mention, and it just, the cost estimate is $20, $20, correct? That was the cost estimate for, that we've been working from.
I do not want to miss.
Okay, welcome back to the regular meeting of July 9th, the Millbrae City Council. I have a roll call, please.
All council members are present.
Okay, we join the city council and pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with all its rights and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We have no ceremonial presentations. Going to have the staff report, please.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Tom Williams, city manager. We have a fun event coming up this Thursday, July 11th. It is our, the city of Millbrae will be hosting our renewed summer concert series entitled Beats and Brews on Broadway. This is a free concert and festival along the 300 block of Broadway between Hillcrest and La Cruz. That street will be blocked off starting in the afternoon. The band that will be featured is called The Buzztones, and they play '60s style music. There'll be food from local restaurants. We have, I believe, nine restaurants that have signed up that will be serving food out on the sidewalk on the closed street. So it'll be fun for the entire family. The live performance starts at 6:00 p.m., but the beer garden and festivities, and we also have root beer from a local brewer, will start at 5:00. And that's this coming Thursday, July 11th, on Broadway between Hillcrest and La Cruz. On July 18th, we have a traffic calming workshop. The city will be hosting a community meeting that will start at 6:00 p.m. It will be held here in the city council chambers to discuss and identify areas that local residents feel are unsafe due to high speeds and traffic issues and traffic calming. So that study, or that community workshop will be July 18th, starting at 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall in the council chambers. The city also received a green business certification. City Hall, we recently reserved, is a green business, a recertification from 2008. The library recertification is currently underway. Millbrae City Hall was actually the first city in Seminole County to receive the green business certification back in 2008. And then lastly, I think we've all experienced or heard of the traffic congestion on Millbrae Avenue at 101, east of 101 to Bay Shore Avenue and South McDonald Road. This occurred due to some changes at San Francisco International Airport with the TNCs. TNCs are known as transportation network companies, also known as Uber and Lyft. The airport changed the access points and the staging areas for ride-sharing services. And they also did some geofencing where these rideshare drivers aren't able to pick up signals in the airport terminal itself. So it's created a tremendous impact on us and the city of Millbrae, I think, as you all know, and certainly as our residents in business know. We've been working diligently with both Lyft, Uber, and San Francisco Airport. This morning, we had a meeting with Lyft and San Francisco Airport. Burlingame participated. And so the airport will be doing some changes in terms of opening it up, and they've actually already did this this last weekend, opening up about a 250 parking space lot on the north side of the airport off of San Bruno Avenue. They've also agreed to do some retesting of their geofencing to allow drivers, when a driver drops somebody off at the terminal, as a result of the new changes, that driver's not allowed to get a ping to pick up a driver in the terminal. So they're going to turn that back on and allow a driver that if they drop somebody off at the airport, they can immediately pick somebody up at the airport within the terminals. As it occurs right now, you drop somebody off, they have to go all the way back to 101 and Millbrae Avenue to get back in the queue to be able to get a request for a pickup. So these are some of the changes that are occurring. Also, we'll be monitoring through a traffic analysis over the next three weeks, how this has improved the area congestion on Millbrae Avenue, and we'll continue to monitor it. So we're aware of it. I think some of the changes that have already occurred have alleviated some of the congestion. It's still not where we want it to be, but I think with some of these other changes and the spirit of cooperation between San Francisco Airport and Lyft, it's very, very positive. So I'm sure we'll work towards a solution. Now, we did invite Uber to the meeting. They did not respond to us, but the airport did have a meeting with them this afternoon, and we're going to try to coordinate a meeting with Uber as well. So moving to the agenda this evening, there are no oral reports from city committees or commissions. That is followed by public communication, and that is an item that anyone from the public can speak for three minutes on any item not on the agenda. After public communication, we move to the consent calendar, starting with item number five, which is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the third addendum to the agreement with Eisenberg, Oliverian Associates for commercial and industrial stormwater inspection. Item number six is to consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to sign an agreement with the following three on-call engineering and building consultant firms, Fourleaf Incorporated, West Coast Co. Consultants, and CSG Consultants, in a total amount not to exceed $3 million for a period of three years to perform as needed professional planning and building services. This $3 million is cost-recoverable by applicants that submit to the city. So it is a, it is a cost-recoverable item. Item number seven is to reject a motion, the two bids that we received for the median and landscaping maintenance services. We're going to re-scope that and reissue that RFP. Item number eight is a resolution authorizing the collection... Item number eight is a resolution authorizing the collection of fiscal year 2019, 2020 stormwater fees on the San Mateo County tax roll. Item nine is council consideration to recess for the month of August of 2019. Item number 10 is to consider approval of a partial fee waiver of $1,000 in rental fees and a $200 in staff costs for the use of library rooms A and B, the security room and the community center great room for the Young Adult Novelist Convention to be held on January 25th of 2020. Item number 11 is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an addendum to the professional services agreement with CSG Consultants for contract engineering and plan check and building services to increase the total compensation in the amount not to exceed $350,000, bringing the total not-to-exceed agreement to 1.3 million. This is an existing contract. All we're doing is extending this for one month as we get the other contracts, thank you, as we get the other contracts resolved. Item number 12 is a resolution awarding a construction contract to Yurba Buena Engineering and Construction Incorporated for the Larkspur Pump Station retaining wall. Item 13 is to adopt a resolution, one, approving the tentative agreements for successor memorandums, MOUs, for the Teamsters Local 856 Miscellaneous Unit, and two, approving the tentative agreements for successor memorandums of understanding, MOUs, with Teamsters Local 856 Sanitation Unit, and authorizing modifications of the summary of management benefits, establishing salary ranges for part-time, temporary, and seasonal classifications in compliance with the state minimum wage law, and adopting revised salary schedules effective July 14th, 2019, and then lastly, amending the City Millbury Position Control Table for fiscal year 2019, 2020. And item number 14, we would like to just remove from the agenda, the applicant is no longer requesting a fee waiver. After the consent calendar, we have no public hearings. We move to item number 15, existing business, and that is further consideration of the ordinance amending chapter 9 point, or 5.95, the smoking control ordinance. I'd like to bring to your attention in your purple folder, we received two letters this afternoon. One is from the California Apartment Association, making some additional recommendations, and the other is from the, bear with me for just a minute. American Lung Associations, American Cancer Society, supporting the ordinance. Item number 16, under new business, is to appoint a voting delegate and an alternate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference, coming up October 16th through the 18th, 2019. Following the agenda items is then council comments, and we have no closed session this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? None? Okay, thank you. Moving on, there's no oral report. We have minutes, June 25th. Motion from Vice Mayor. Second from Councilman Leva. Your votes, please.
The minutes from the regular meeting of June 25th passed unanimously.
Thank you. And I have one speaker slip, Emily Goodwin. Thank you, Emily, for coming. When you see the yellow light, that means you've got 30 seconds to sum up.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, members of the public, city council members and staff. My name's Emily Goodwin. I work for Y Green Energy Fund. That's the word "energy" spelled backwards. Y Green is a PACE finance company. PACE stands for Property Assessed Clean Energy Financing, but there's a whole lot more that's financed under the clause of PACE financing. Millbury has PACE financing already with some of our competitors, and that's great. I'm here simply to introduce myself and offer consideration of adding more choice and competition to your constituents. We do both residential, small commercial, and large commercial projects. The small commercial piece is pretty unique to our program because we don't have a minimum amount that exceeds $250,000 for small and mid-sized business customers to take advantage of this finance option. I'll bring to your attention some recent developments in PACE, is that we can finance fire resiliency measures, as well as seismic retrofitting measures, which has been in our portfolio for some time. The fire is obviously new. After the catastrophic fires of 2017 and 2018, the legislature passed a measure last year. And so we can offer those resiliency measures for residential and commercial properties, which is really important to provide a choice for constituents to make those improvements, to improve fire resiliency. Seismic has been in our portfolio for some time, but I think the recent earthquakes in Southern California remind us all about disaster preparedness and helping constituents make upgrades to their homes and commercial properties to really save on hazard mitigation costs that are inevitable in this state. We are one of the leading PACE providers. We've been around since the beginning in California and have markets in Florida and Missouri as well. And we are one of the pioneers with some of the consumer protections enhancements that have really developed over the last two years. And I have some materials for each of the council members, city manager, city attorney, and then a few of the staff members, if they'd be so kind to consider approving our program and adding more choice and competition to your constituency here. We're a proud league member as well. We'll be at the annual conference in October, and we have a seat on the Environmental Quality Committee as well, because of course, PACE has always fed into, you know, helping cities achieve their climate action plan goals, as well as economic development goals with workforce development in the trades. So again, my name's Emily Goodwin, and I left my phone number on the contact information. I will follow up with an email, so you all have my electronic contact info, and I appreciate your time this evening. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, so moving on, we have no public hearings. Onto existing business, further consideration of the ordinance amending chapter 5.95, smoking control of Title V. What's that? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm trying to get ahead.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, we should also address the report out of closed session from the 25th. That was labor negotiations. The council authorized the settlement of those labor contracts, which are before you for formal approval this evening.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Would you like to report? Or you just reported? Okay, thank you. Okay, on the consent calendar.
Yes. I'd like to pull item eight for a brief comment.
Okay. Seven? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve 5, 6, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13? Yeah, first and second, your votes, please.
14's been pulled.
14, 14's been eliminated. The request has been rescinded. Do we have votes? Okay, thank you.
It passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. So item seven, do we, is there?
Just a comment to staff. I have no problem with rejecting the bids when they're that much over what we estimated, but I get a lot of complaints from the public about what the way El Camino work looks at. Sorry, allergies today. So I don't want this to wait too long, and I hate to think that we're hiring companies when we don't have a landscape plan for El Camino Real. And I would just encourage us to go look at what SFO Airport has done in their new buildings that they've built on the north end of the airport. They've done some really lovely drought-tolerant stuff, although I think we need trees on El Camino. So I'm hoping that that's going to be included in the next time we go around to the bill. And I'm sure community enhancement would be appreciated if those plans are run past them.
Thank you. And you have a motion to approve item seven? Okay, your votes, please.
Item number seven passed unanimously.
Thank you. Item number eight, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I just see that these, I don't have a problem approving this tonight, but I see these fees have not been updated since 1994, and the stormwater fund is significantly subsidized by the general fund, so I think we may want to look into possibly increasing these fees. It's very low right now. I don't know what they are in neighboring cities, but something to look at, I think, in the coming year before next year.
Any mic, please?
Well, so two things. One, that study is underway, so we have two different studies. One is the Development Impact Fee Study for Improvements, and one is our service fees. So this will be coming to the council in the fall for consideration of increasing those fees, and it is a Proposition 218 issue or vote. So it's a protest vote that we would have to go through to raise the fees. This does not lock us in to these fees. The council has the authority to, you know, amend the fees and go through the Prop 218 vote.
Mr. Mayor, the chair. So this resolution would lock us in for one year, for FY 1920, and then any update would be going to effect July 1 of 2020.
I think you can amend the...
You do have a limited opportunity to put things on the tax roll, so you're correct.
Okay.
Right, so it goes in, I think, August, mid-August is the deadline.
Okay.
And then it appears, and then we get our tax bill, so. Right, so in terms of collecting it, I mean, I suppose you could improve it and then get it next year, but right now, this is it for this year. Maybe, you may be able to get it on a supplemental roll later, but I think, pretty much this is it.
Process, there's what, a 45-day notice or notice period, something like that?
It's gonna take a while.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to do it by August, and we'd need to complete the study first.
I think the Vice Mayor is, if I may, is concerned with what we've done in the past, which was a very painful process, and we, the councils in the past have kind of delayed any fees and looking at fees, and then we would hit our citizens with a huge increase to make up for the lack of action by the council. So we want to avoid that type of pain. So we want to make sure staff is looking at that and making sure that we are raising our fees in an incremental way that won't severely impact people in, you know, one shot.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept item eight? Okay, your votes, please.
Item number eight passed unanimously.
Okay, on to public hearing, there is none, on to existing business. Further consideration of ordinance amending chapter 5.95, smoking control of Title V of Millbury Missile prohibiting smoking in multi-unit residential housing, regulating outdoor smoking in vicinity of such units and outdoor spaces. We're just focusing on the multiple units. We're not addressing the whole ordinance, so I know last time, we, all of us, including myself, wanted different changes in the ordinance, and we can always, I think, if there's a need to bring that back, we can express that, but let's not, let's just focus on the multiple dwelling units today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, welcome, council. So I have a very brief presentation on the ordinance. As you recall, back on June 25th, we introduced for first reading the new ordinance that would ban smoking in multifamily residential units, and council, through their discussion, gave staff a number of directions about some of the language that was in that proposed ordinance. If you recall, there was an exemption that was going to apply to assisted-living facilities. There was discussion about whether or not that was really necessary. As a matter of policy, most of these types of facilities already have bans in place, but we wanted to authorize that as an exemption, but that, we were directed to take that out. There are no state or federal laws that would impact our ability to remove that exemption, so that was done. We, there was conversations about how we would phase the new ordinance in. There seemed to be consensus on just making the ordinance effective as of January 1st, 2020. There was, if you recall, an exemption on the ability for people that have medical marijuana needs to smoke, and I think that the conversation was that there are other ways and other ability to meet that need, and so smoking was not necessary, so that exemption was also taken out. And then there was discussion about the distance criteria that we were going to have, which is that you are unable to then smoke within 40 feet of a multifamily residential use, and so we wanted to talk a little bit about how that related to, you know, proposed new mixed-use buildings and clarifying that that would also relate to a vertical measurement as well as a horizontal measurement. With that, what you do have before you this evening is the clean copy of the ordinance that was originally before you. You have the red line that shows you where those changes were made as the direction from council. And then the second part of tonight's conversation, and for further guidance from the council staff, is that you also direct the staff to analyze implementation and enforcement of the ordinance. So with that, there are, on pages two and three of the staff report, we have two sections, one related to enforcement, the other related to implementation. The first part, let's talk a little bit about enforcement. Some of the options that were laid out for discussion for council this evening is, one is that how do we go about getting enforcement? So there's sort of an idea between sort of the private right of action and whether or not that's within contracts, or if that's by statute, right? So one option is to have a contract that would require landlords of multi-unit residences to include in their leases contract language that would make it clear that smoking within unit is a violation. So you could come up with lease language that would say that smoking is prohibited and that other tenants are third-party beneficiaries of the smoking prohibition. The second option could be by statute, where the city would create a right of action, which would basically allow the public at large to enforce the ordinance. So we have a policy decision to sort of make on that regard, and it kind of just depends on how broadly the city would like to go. So whether or not you'd like to see that enforced through leases and/or give the public the ability to sort of point out where there are violations. The next relates to sort of extended liability, so who's liable when there are violations? And that could be with the landlord, or it could be with the person that leases the unit. And then last but not least, is sort of direction as to whether or not we want to broaden the ordinance as it relates to implementation. And so things that we could do were to provide some lease language that would be stock language that landlords would be able to take from the city and put within their leases, that we could require that there are no smoking signs within the 40-foot parameters of buildings. And then there's, last but not least, one way to sort of get at existing smokers that would be caught up in this ordinance as of January 1 would be to perhaps allow for designated smoking areas. So that's a policy consideration before council as well. So with that, basically what we're hoping this evening is that you'll go ahead and have that conversation and direct staff if there's any further changes you'd like to see within the ordinance. We'll go ahead and go make those changes and then come back again for the actual second reading, and then, of course, the ordinance would become effective, is it 30 or 45 days? Oh, I'm sorry, right, right. January 1, right, exactly. Sorry about that.
Yeah, okay, so let's do, any brief questions, and then let's have the audience, and then we'll have comments. Is that okay? Any questions so far? Councilman Drashnikov?
I'm going to try to find the pages. There, there's a section in here that talks about hotels being exempt because they're not apartments or multifamily dwellings, but a number of hotels actually do serve as long-term living spaces. I'm not sure what the right definition of that is, but I worked the census, and those residential hotels are a specific category in the U.S. Census Bureau, in terms of collecting data for people living in them.
30 days.
Yeah. 30 days or less.
But I believe that there are, I don't know if we have any in Millbury, but there are places that are defined as hotels or motels that people are living in all year round. Same person all year round, regardless of...
So the rule is that 30 consecutive days or less is still a hotel, more than 30 consecutive days. So if it's an extended-stay hotel, somebody's there for 28 days, and they leave for one day, and then they check back in, it's still a hotel.
So they would be exempt, or they get picked up under the business side, and I know we're not talking about the business side. I'm just trying to figure out that my experience has been hotels become permanent residents.
But the way we regulate hotels, we don't let them become permanent residents.
Correct.
There's that 30-day...
Vice Mayor, can I jump in? I believe smoking in hotels is prohibited under state law, I believe. They don't have smoking rooms and non, within the room and within, I assume, within lobbies and indoor areas, pools and things like that.
Which then brings us to the designated smoking area and the decision we as a group. But that was just one. The other question that I had when I read through the language and I read the American Cancer Society and my own experience as a landlord with somebody who brought in a hookah pipe and a bunch of flavored stuff, I don't know if that was flavored tobacco or flavored stuff. It was both a solid and a liquid, and I'm not sure our ordinance is specific to that.
Yeah, I thought we talked about vaping. Yeah, I thought we talked about vaping.
We talked about vaping, but...
It's pretty much the same thing, it's, it's...
I'm a nonsmoker, so I don't know, I just want to make sure, if, if we agree, should we be specific with these?
Yeah, I thought, I thought that was the desire of the Council to exhibit.
We're gonna listen to the public.
Yeah, we will.
And then we can make...
Yeah, there was a question, so, you know, I think, do you have a question?
So the ordinance, the definition of smoking in the ordinance does include aerosols and vapors, as well as, as well as plant products intended for inhalation, so.
And I, I read the plant products, I'm just not sure that, it's fairly vague in terms of enforcing, since I've had to enforce on that. And then my other question is, I'm not sure if Millbrae has any homeowner associations, and there's no discussion of CCNRs, and what would happen to do, but my HOA in Mountain View is considering updating CCNRs, and it's a whole other area.
So the ordinance would preempt, so you couldn't have an ordinance, a CCNR is that we're inconsistent with the ordinance, so if the ordinance prohibits smoking, the CCNRs can't allow it?
I was having trouble finding the reference to vaping, where, where is that?
So this is the definition of smoking, this is...
Oh, smoking?
Yes.
In their ordinance, so.
So in 5.95101M, so smoking means inhaling, exhaling, burning, or carrying any lighted or heated pipe, cigar, or cigarette of any kind, or any other lighted or heated tobacco or plant product intended for inhalation, whether natural or synthetic, in any manner and, or in any form. Smoking includes the use of an electronic smoking device that creates an aerosol or vapor in any manner or any form, or the use of any oral smoking device for the purpose of circumventing the prohibition of smoking.
Okay, so that would include...
Yes.
So if we're making comments...
Councilwoman Leiva.
So can we go back on what you just said about CCNRs, and if the, if we put this through, the CCNRs can't allow it, unless we were to put in here that we were exempt owner-occupied units?
We could put in an exemption for, or we, we can define the scope of the ordinance in, in the ordinance itself, if there was a desire to, to exempt condo buildings, for example, if the, if the homeowners association so desired, we could technically do that, but this current ordinance does not.
Well, we talk a lot about leases and when it would be enforced, a one-year lease, and if it starts, you know, on January 1st, but you don't have a lease if you own it, so if you're owner-occupied, could they be exempt from this ordinance?
It could be, but it is not currently drafted that way.
So that's what I was suggesting, maybe we think about it.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, you're suggesting that we exempt owner-occupied?
No, 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 we also include them, because right now, the question, the definition is that they're not renting.
I'm not saying to include them, I'm saying if somebody bought a condominium and a unit in a, in a, in a HOA, they bought it, and they bought it with the right to smoke in it, we're going to tell them now that you bought this million-dollar condo, you can't smoke in it?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. The reason I bring this up, given that...
It has nothing to do with leases, that we're talking about your leases throughout this whole ordinance.
Hey, that's not a question, that's a comment.
Yeah, I mean, the, the purpose is multi-unit smoking, it's not tenant smoking or leased smoking, it's multi-unit residences, the issue is that it gets, you know, through the walls and under doors and windows, it doesn't matter if it's owner-occupied or rented, it's a health issue.
Okay, let's go on to, allow the public to speak in this.
Can I just make that clear, the reason I brought that up is, if it's not defined, then it makes it harder when we're trying to enforce. Now, again, other cities have lots of HOAs, I'm not at all familiar if we have any in Millbrae, because we didn't evolve that way, but as a former board member of an HOA, with state and local laws, everybody can point their finger at each other on, in terms of enforcement, so I think you have to define a term so that it's very clear when you do enforcement actions.
Okay, that is the, we'll have to come back to that, that's a big, that's a big issue. Okay, can I? Thanks, Mayor.
Do you want to go to the public comment first?
Yes, I would, if that's okay with you. Okay, Smitha?
Good evening, Honorable Millbrae City Council members and community, my name is Smitha Gundavajala, I work for the Youth Leadership Institute, and I am a co-chair of the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition. As a coalition of residents and organizations that serve communities across the county, we want to thank the Council for the ordinance that we have before us today. We applaud your commitment to supporting the health of the Millbrae community, as this is already a stronger ordinance than the one that was introduced on June 25th. We see reflected in this updated draft many of the experiences and challenges residents face around secondhand smoke, so thank you for listening to their voices. I would urge the Council to further unpack some of the concerns around the definition of multi-unit housing. We have heard from residents how detrimental, noxious, and hazardous secondhand smoke can be. Understanding that there are multiple definitions of multi-unit housing under various ordinances, we'd recommend that the City Council further strengthen the ordinance to include duplexes and triplexes in the definition of multi-unit housing. Smoke travels through walls, air vents, and electrical outlets, and its detrimental effects are felt, whether or not they come from an owned or rented unit, the public health impacts are the same. I would also like to extend the support of the Tobacco Education Coalition to the Council in advance of the January 1 implementation date, to raise awareness and to share information with residents, to prepare them for the changes that are to come. And lastly, I just want to thank you for really prioritizing the health of residents in all of the decisions and conversations that you've had so far, because we hear that and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Edward?
Good evening, City Council, my name is Edward, I'm a visitor from San Carlos, but I've been involved with the Tobacco Education Coalition, just observing what's going through, and I took a look at your ordinance, and I've compared it to one of the model ordinances by its Change Lab Solutions, which is a nonprofit group in Oakland that does public policy and advocacy in this area. I do want to agree that the ordinance does not expressly prohibit smoking or marijuana or medical marijuana, and Change Lab suggests language saying pursuant to California state law, health and safety codes, and then it gives the numbers, where smoking cannabis is prohibited wherever smoking tobacco is prohibited. The ordinance also does not define smoke with an express definition of cannabis included in that definition of smoke, so the suggested language is, the term "smoke" includes, but it's not limited to tobacco smoke, vapors from an electronic device, and cannabis smoke, and I'm happy to provide you a copy with this model ordinance. Change Lab also does, one of your policy questions is including the private policy, excuse me, private enforcement provision, and that's to give any member of the public the right to enforce the ordinance in either Superior Court or Small Claims Court. I would also suggest broadening the definition of multi-unit residences to include patios, decks, and porches associated with all individual units. I'd also recommend, like cities like Belmont, that the ordinance declare that violations of the ordinance constitutes a nuisance, and this does, it can include that non-consensual exposure to smoke is a nuisance, and that kind of broadens the way that the ordinance can have its effect on the public. And finally, this is just my own suggestion, that designated smoking areas within multi-unit residences should not be included, because you can't control the distance that secondhand smoke travels. Thank you.
Thank you for comment. Randy?
All right, well, good evening, so I'm Randy Wong, and I work at Breathe California, and I just wanted to reiterate my support for the Council continuing to develop this ordinance further, I know you've all done, you know, a lot of work with staff as well. I would like to just, you know, point out a couple of things that I think could be interesting for the Council to consider. One of them is to reiterate the point that Smitha had made earlier about duplexes, you know, triplexes that are owner-occupied. I'd like really just to focus about it in terms of this concept of design over ownership, you know, with walls being shared, and, you know, with other shared ventilation, other ducts and stuff like that. An owner could occupy something or, or not, but, you know, smoke still travels in that way, and, you know, like with, with residences being, you know, owned by some people, maybe leased out for a little while, and then having the owner return, it, you know, leads to quite a bit of difficulty with being able to ensure the health of the people who are living right next door, which is really kind of the main, one of the major, I think, impetuses for this smoke-free housing legislation, so just like to consider that. And then also, just, you know, in terms of education and enforcement, you know, should the Council continue to pass and develop this ordinance, you know, I think many of us in the Tobacco Education Coalition would be happy to provide education and information in the community to really make sure that it's developed well, that people know about it, and that it's followed. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy, appreciate that. Stefan?
I'm Stephen Sterling, glad to...
Sorry.
I'm the property owners, owner of two buildings, apartment buildings in Millbrae, across the street from the RAC Center, to be, whenever you guys get it, yeah, look good, by the way. I have, I am directly across the street, I mean, literally, right across the street, so keep it going. My, my question today, I compliment you for trying this, but my, my question's about enforcement. I'm an owner of two apartment buildings, there's seven units each, 14 units total. I don't live on the premise, on the premise, and there are buildings there, there are 16, I think the, I think the code says 16 and above, you have to have an onsite manager, I don't have those. How do I enforce what you're about to try and do today? I commend you for doing it, but how do you enforce that? If I do get a property manager, which is possible, down the road, how do they enforce it? Currently, I do it. I'm the janitor, I'm the painter, I'm the landlord, I'm the gardener, I'm the, everybody, I got it now, I can do it now, but how do you enforce something, and I don't have 40 feet, by the way, so if you go Lincoln Circle, there is no 40 feet. So when I lease, I tell the guys, no, no smoking, but you're, you're about to institute something that's, you know, a law, or a code, that I could be liable for, and I'm sitting here today saying, look, I, I got millions and millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars built, tied up in those buildings, and you're gonna, you're gonna find me for something that I have no control over? I agree with you, the smoke through the walls, through the vents, through the, yeah, I agree, totally agree, but how in the hell am I supposed to? So if you guys can keep that in consideration tonight, when you guys do that, because us honest, old-fashioned, you know, we want to do the right thing, but tell me how. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, any other, anybody else like to make a comment about this? Okay, thank you, let's bring it back to the Council. Did somebody once come by?
Sorry, we had additional information.
Okay, we have additional information. You can give a brief, that'd be appreciated.
Thank you, so I just wanted to offer support, because I know a couple of the comments, including mine, mentioned duplexes and triplexes, if there is a need for language to help kind of model a potential ordinance, sorry, if, if you want language to help inform the duplexes and triplexes provision, the San Carlos ordinance in Section 8.3.2, Section F, mentions that, like, more recent ordinances would include duplexes and triplexes, rental complexes, any residential property containing two or more units with one or more shared abutting walls, floors, ceilings, or shared ventilation systems, including common interest development, condominium, townhouse, duplex, triplex, an apartment, or other rental complex. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pappen?
Do we need to close the public hearing?
We closed it last time.
Oh, okay. I think point one is the liability issue, my belief is that this is a city ordinance, and people should have to call the city to enforce it, I don't think at this point in time, maybe this won't work, but I don't think we should be opening up to civil litigation, the courts are already jam-packed. Again, if this doesn't work, we can pursue it further, but my point being, it's a city ordinance, the city should be enforcing it, so if someone is in a multi-unit building, as the property owner just suggested, state law does not require him to have an onsite manager, I don't think it's appropriate that we be going after the landlords, these are businesspeople that are providing multi-unit residents, and most of the leases at this point in time just do not permit smoking, period. I do thank the Apartment Association providing a sample lease here, I do believe that their sample lease would also, we can provide it to our residents, it would include the ordinance so that if anybody had a problem with neighboring tenants, they could call up and report it, so the code enforcement officer can go out and handle that. So I think this is important at this point in time, that we are not opening this up for neighbor, litigating with neighbor, and that we take this first step, that people report it to the city and code enforcement.
Councilman Leiva?
First, I want to congratulate the young generation for being aware of health and safety factors, I commend you very much, but I do have to, I do have to agree with the homeowner that it's not their job to enforce something that we put into place, and the fact that you put it in a lease and you post it on your building should be plenty, and you should be able to go on vacation and not have to worry that somebody's gonna go against something that they, the city put into place. So enforcement by no means should be anything by the landlord. I do have a problem with owners in multi-units, they bought, they bought into, they bought into a real property without this on them, and while I don't promote smoking, I think it's only fair that as a private property owner, they have rights, as do tenants, the tenants have the option to live there, they're in a 30-year lease, 360 easy payments, and if in fact they're locked into that, I think that that's far, weighs far more than somebody that has a one-year lease. I want to also take into consideration with this 40-foot of multi-residential unit, that one of the goals of this Council was to bring developments into our downtown, and if you go down our downtown, 40, 40 feet is going to affect a lot of our very prosperous businesses. And not only are we affecting homeowners, tenants, but we're affecting businesses in our city, and I would have, I have a problem with that 40-foot radius, or how it would affect things like Fiddler's Green, I have a problem with the homeowners that bought into a 30-year lease, and most importantly, it is not the job of the apartment owner to enforce this.
Vice Mayor Holber?
I have a question on the private right of action, the options of the contract versus statute, would it be possible to do both, like, we require landlords to post, to include no-smoking language in their leases, and post signage and everything, but at the same signage and everything, but at the same time, we would allow the public at large the right to enforce the ordinance?
Yes, it's possible to do both. It'd be a little bit duplicative, but it's possible.
I think we absolutely should require that to be in lease language. I don't have a problem with also including the statute option as well. But I think primarily the enforcement should be with the tenant unless there's some type of, you know, I could see maybe if there's like some type of a nuisance, you know, somebody with multiple complaints, multiple citations, that at some point you would then have to get the landlord involved in, in the enforcement mechanism. But I think first, first and foremost, it should be with, well, not necessarily tenant, but the resident, the smoker themselves.
I'm unclear, if I may. Is Councilmember Holber suggesting that a lease include language that other tenants are gonna sue you? Right of action?
No. I didn't say that. What I said is that, that we require that leases state that smoking is prohibited and that signage is required on, on the property to, but at the same time, the statute option, I think perhaps should be on the table.
The statute option? I don't understand that.
Option two. Which the City of San Mateo has approved, City of Belmont, and others. In which case, it's, it's out of our hands at that point, right?
Okay. Could legal counsel clarify what Councilmember Holber is trying to present here? I don't have a problem with, one, it being in the lease that smoking is prohibited and that there is standardized signage. I don't have a problem with any of that. So people are well noticed that that's not permitted. His additional part I have, needs explaining.
So one, one mechanism that the City of Redwood City uses is that in addition to having language in the lease stating that smoking is not prohibited in the unit, is that they, they require all leases to include language stating that other tenants in the building are third-party beneficiaries of that, that language. So what that means in kind of layman's terms is that you have an obligation not only to the landlord not to smoke in the unit, but you have an obligation to your neighbors not to smoke. And your neighbors can enforce that obligation if you breach it. So if you, if you, if you're smoking in your, in your unit and you're, and you're not supposed to, your neighbor could file a claim against you for breach of contract.
Okay. I have an issue with that in that I don't like my neighbor, and I'm just gonna say they've been smoking. And I just don't think we should be opening up civil litigation at this point in time. Again, if this initial ordinance doesn't work, we can readdress it and modify it at that point in time. But there are disputes between neighbors all the time. I think simply if you're signing on the dotted line in a lease, it's a legal document and you've attested that you're going to abide by the conditions thereof. So I think taking it to the next level is not appropriate. And again, the city ordinance, the city will be enforcing this, so if it's fine with the, we're, we're offering language to the landlords that this is a city ordinance, here's who you report it to, and the city will enforce it, that's where I think we should be. Going beyond that, I think we are opening up a can of worms here, that the courts are already filled to the brim. And seriously, people can, if you're opening up civil litigation, people have been known to abuse that to a point where the most vulnerable people could not even defend themselves. So I'm not comfortable with that aspect.
Councilwoman Snyder?
I'm trying to, I think I agree with you. You're saying both, if we're looking at the staff report where there's option one and option two, do both.
Yeah, I may have misread the staff report a little bit, but...
When I read that, I had the same thought. Can we do both? Now, I am a landlord, and I have had, I have always had a non-smoking property, but I've had tenants halfway through their lease start smoking when they started getting cancer. And I modified my lease accordingly for that. And that was in the early days of marijuana smoking for cancer patients when it was still illegal. I, I have had people use a hookah lounge, and I don't discover it until after. So I have modified the language in my lease based on, my original thing is a California Apartment Association lease, but I've learned over time, and I've cleared it through Project Sentinel, of what language I can use. I hear the gentleman here, I wouldn't be able to enforce it. So I'm, I'm along the same line that I don't think we can hold landlords, I think they've got to do everything we stipulate. They've got to have a no-smoking sign. I disagree with the California Apartment Association saying using the standard no-smoking sign, because we already have to make it our sign with our ordinance on it. At least in my enforcement days, you have to have the ordinance on the sign or it's not enforceable. So illegal dumping, that's one of the rules that you learn. So it would have to have that. I would prefer that we also have a universal signal or symbol for e-vaping, because I've had discussions with people who's, I don't know what the right term is, use electronic cigarettes, and they don't consider it smoking. I do, but they don't. So I think the signage should have both. But I think if a landlord has done it, what they can, then that's one aspect, and then the city comes in. Although I was wondering, in my townhome, 73 townhomes, 16 buildings, multiple shared walls, where exactly would you put the no-smoking sign? So I think we need to think a little bit more about where the non-smoking sign is, just to set the playing field. Now, I vet, I thought I vetted all my tenants, and I've made it very clear that I am, and that it, as the language in the new CAA says, I'm very strong with what it's gonna cost them in terms of their security deposit if they have smoked in the property and I have to do extra cleaning for it. And I know we all try that, but sometimes it's out of our hands. So I kind of agree with Gina, we shouldn't go that far. I agree with the vice mayor that we should have both layers. I like the idea of sample language for the lease. I strongly encourage the City of Melbury to reach out to our partners who've come to two meetings now, who have been working this issue throughout the region, so that we can learn from them what works and what doesn't work. We don't have to reinvent the wheel here. I think enforcement's gonna be tough. And as Gina has said, or the councilwoman has said, let's start where we are and then we can learn from it. But let's figure out what you guys have already learned from other places. So I would like to see staff meet with them in a formal process and try to figure out the enforcement side. Again, I used to, as a contract manager, if terms aren't in a contract, they aren't in an ordinance, you can't enforce it. Hence, my desire to see CCNRs listed. And I agree with having duplex and triplexes. It's a gray area, but I was trying to think, how do Airbnbs fit in with that? I, I would err on, either you smoke in a residential property or you don't. And I disagree with Councilwoman Oliva. I have a townhome. I had to close all my windows when the catty corner house behind me would smoke all night long, and I'd have to live inside my house so that the smoke wouldn't come in. So, you know, yeah, properties are valuable, and you also have a responsibility to, to the people around you. So I liked the language that you used.
Okay. Let me make my comments, so...
So I think that's where I'm at.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I don't know if there's confusion out there, at least maybe I'm interpreting incorrectly on some of the comments, but our definition of a multi-unit resident does include, it's, it's two or more units. So we don't exempt...
No, except for...
Multi-unit residence means residential property containing two or more units with one or more shared wall, floor, ceiling, ventilation system, including apartments, condominiums, duplex, and townhomes.
So it's the owner occupied.
With the exception of owner occupied. No, I, I know. I think we're talking about two different issues. One is the definition of a multi-unit, which we do define as two or more units. And then the other is the exemption in our specific ordinance, which I think is different than perhaps other cities, which we exempt owner-occupied duplexes and triplexes. So I think that's the, unless I'm missing something. So if it's not an owner-occupied duplex or triplex, then this ordinance applies. If it's an owner-occupied, then there's an exemption. So I just want to clarify that. Sounds like we're going down a communication that...
Councilwoman Oliver, I mean...
Well, one is the definition. I want to be clear that what the definition of a multi-unit...
Mr. Mayor, were you done with your...
No, I didn't.
Anyway, I apologize. I just wanted for clarification. Sorry, Mayor.
I just thought I should make a comment, so then we can, there's, there's a lot of discussion about focusing on owner responsibility first, and I addressed that, because then we can somehow figure out where this council is going, because I don't think staff is getting a feeling of where this council is going. So in terms of responsibility, I think that as long as the owners, they, they have responsibility to, to enforce the laws and rules of the, of the cities and state and federal. So I, I understand what Councilwoman Oliva's trying to say. They shouldn't be responsible for, for this ordinance, but they are responsible in a certain way that they need to comply with the ordinance. So I think that's what you meant. And in that respect, they need to enforce certain things. And my, my opinion is that, I had the same ideas, same thought as Vice Mayor Holber and Councilwoman Oliva, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilman Snyder. And that there has, there should be some sort of way that, I mean, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a multi-unit owner too in San Francisco, so, you know, you're talking about tough market. That's a really tough market. So I am, I, I, you know, you just, I, I, we try to comply with everything, and, and I think that's, and if the landlord is complying as option one, saying that they do what they're due diligence, then that's all they really need to do. And so as long as, and I think that's, and that's not gonna cause any lawsuits, I don't think. And I do think that the opportunity for a neighbor, I don't know if it's a, there has to be a way, other than encouraging a lawsuit, a mechanism in which, and we can do that procedurally as a, as a city, to say, hey, you know, I have a problem with this neighbor, and they can report it to the city, and then the city will investigate it or something. And they should tell the owner too, what's going on, and the owner should get involved as well. Because as owner, I don't want somebody smoking in my building as in I have to clean up and spend lots and lots and lots of money to clean, to take, to get the smoke out and get it ready for the next, for the next tenant. And second-hand smoke, and I also think that there should be provisions for somebody, a smoke room or something, to allow people to smoke in isolated rooms. If they want, like the airport, they have a, a smoking room for people who just, you know, there's people gonna smoke, and, you know, they're just gonna smoke outside, they're gonna smoke, you know, just pushing it elsewhere. So if we can contain it, that would, that's my, that's my personal feeling. But, so anyway, on the person of responsibility, that's how I feel. So I hope that helps the discussion along here.
It doesn't help my discussion.
Well, I think we have three, it sounds to me like we have three agreement.
There's, there's no way in the world that we should infringe an ordinance to encourage people to sue their neighbors.
No, I'm saying, I don't want people to sue their neighbors.
Well, they're going to if we infringe this ordinance.
I don't agree, but he's...
I have to agree with Councilmember Oliva. I mean, you have three options here. One is, this is a city ordinance, and that neighbors can report neighbors that the city enforces it. Number two is, you're going to hold the landlord responsible for any violation. So as the gentleman mentioned, he is not onsite, he can't be onsite. Grandma comes to visit, and she's a chain smoker, and you're gonna hold him responsible?
I don't think you heard me.
Well, I'm just trying to clarify here, sir.
No, no. For my, for my, let me clarify for you, because I'm thinking you're hearing me wrong. I'm just saying, if they do their, if the landlord does their due diligence, then, you know, they don't have to go in and, they, they put it on the lease that say, you know, this is the new ordinance in Melbury, you cannot smoke, and blah, blah, blah.
Well, then you're not agreeing with...
You put your no-smoking...
Councilmember Schneider and Councilwoman Oliver.
Please don't interrupt me.
Sorry, but...
Let me, let me finish my thought, and then you can have your thought. Okay? Thank you. The option one says that the landowner lends his due diligence, he doesn't, he's not, he doesn't have to enforce, I mean, he doesn't have to go in and try to enforce the, that's the way I read it, anyway, that he, he's not responsible for enforcing the, the ordinance. Is, am I, am I reading it wrong?
Well, I think, I think there's two things. One, in the staff report, and correct me if I'm wrong, there were just some ideas to perhaps consider. The ordinance itself is very simple, and it's just a nuisance violation, as been discussed, the way the ordinance is written currently.
So currently, the ordinance does not impose liability on landlords and does not grant any right of action to other neighbors or the, or the public generally to enforce the ordinance. These are, these are options that other cities have taken, and so we wanted to present them to the council for your consideration as avenues for enforcement.
Okay.
Age two and three, the staff report are just for discussion purposes and information.
Okay. So what I'm trying to figure out is, is where's the council going on this? So I'm sorry, Councilwoman Oliva, just a minute. So council, so if I understand correctly, we all agree that we don't want to create a, a system for, for people to, you know, to encourage people to sue each other. Am I, I got, I got that gist of that, right? I understand also that we don't want to put the, the owner of the property responsible if he does his due diligence. Is that correct?
I could hear the second.
If, if, if the owners does their due diligence...
The sign? The sign?
When this signage, as, as option one, as, as option one is proposed by, by staff, let me read it for the audience at home. The city could make landlords liable for violation occurring within the multi-unit residence. Some cities, such as cities of Rhona Park, Belmont, and San Mateo, make landlords liable for knowingly permitting or concealing violations. Some cities make landlords liable, liability, offer them a safe harbor. For example, in Rhona Park, if a landlord places a smoking, no-smoking signs, including smoking provisions and leases, and takes appropriate steps to, and to respond to complaints, the landlord is not liable. Am I reading that, am I reading it so then it's not, it's not on the landlord?
That's an option if you wanted to go...
That's an option.
It's not what's proposed.
There are about three different options in there.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that option at this point in time. I think we should try the ordinance as it exists with certain modifications, but you are opening the door to, as the property owner, just express what we, the obligations we are currently giving the property owner under this ordinance is that they put it in the lease, they explain where somebody reports a violation, and then they put up signage.
Okay. Let me have Councilwoman Oliva, she had a rebuttal, let her...
I agree 100% with, with Councilmember Pappin just said, and I thank you, staff, for doing your due diligence and additional issues, but this is further research on which I'm not comfortable with. So that if we're, if we're having the discussion here on five of us, I could only imagine what an apartment building is gonna do to interpret this with tenants. So the way that it's written, I would agree with Councilmember Pappin. The landlord puts the no-smoking, they put it in their lease, and the city takes responsibility if there's a tenant in there that is complaining. They call code enforcement. Our ordinance will be mandated by us.
Vice Mayor?
I guess the question is then, what if the landlord doesn't do the proper notification? Then at that point, are they liable? I think the answer should be yes.
It'd be a violation of our municipal code, up to a $1,000 fine.
We cited.
Yep.
I'm okay with that. Okay.
To me, the key then, if I'm looking at that same paragraph where it says, put the sign up, include it in your lease, we don't have any problem. Any, all the five of us are okay with that. It's this other thing that if someone complains, and the landlord has to take appropriate steps, the appropriate steps is undefined. And I'm in the middle of this right now with my neighbor across the street, who, according to our rules, can't park in pub, in the guest parking, but does. So I contacted the owner, and the owner said, will you turn them into the seat, turn them into the HOA? Well, the HOA isn't gonna do anything.
But we were talking about parking smoking.
I know, but I'm trying to give you real-world examples of how this is gonna play out. And so I'm right now, I'm a, I'm an owner with a problem tenant across the street from me who doesn't give a darn about the rest of the community, and the owner of the property doesn't give a darn. And that's where, who steps in then? And this has been going on for five or six years.
Got a question?
So to me, the question is more enforcement, I think. How do you interpret what we've written into an actual real enforcement that we, the city, can do?
Call your property manager.
Or they can call the city directly, and we open up a code enforcement case and investigation, and we pursue it down that...
To the property manager or to the HOA who needs to be responsible for whatever it is that the city is saying you can't do.
The property owner, HOA, all the above, or whoever.
One, I just kind of, one benefit that the proposed language offers is that by requiring the landlord to put the prohibition in the lease... the landlord to put the prohibition in the lease, it is also giving the landlord a, a tool, but not requiring them to use the tool, that if they now have grounds to evict a tenant if they violate the rule. But we're not, as I understand it, seeking to force the landlord to do that, but it is an option. And that way, it's not that they have to start at the beginning, you know, if it's not in the lease, then, then it's harder if they chose to. But that's just where we're drawing the line.
Mr. Sliding, did you have a, something to add?
Can I, can I? You guys are right on the mic, except for you're missing a big point here, man. Prove it. Prove it. You've got to be present. You've got to be actually at, onsite when the tenant is actually violating the code that you guys are talking about. It can't be hearsay. The tenant next door hates the one next door, we've all had those, right? And then we turn around and go, he's smoking. I get down there, there's no smoke. There's smell, but there's no smoke. I've called a policeman before. Unless you specifically see it with your own eyes, sorry, sir, I can't do anything about it. How many times you heard that, San Francisco? All right, so that's where the problem is. You come back, you go, it's a he say, she say thing. And I agree with you, I'd love to have this idea implemented, but how are you going to prove it? How are you going to enforce it if I don't live there? I'm there all the time, and I, I constantly, I have a good rapport with all my tenants, they're all friends. I love them all. But, have they lied to me? Yeah. Yeah. Okay? So, the point being, and I don't have a 40-foot area. 40-foot is your rec center, for me. So, what do I do? And where do you put the sign? Because I've got fence, I've got stairs, I've got stuccos, you know, tell me.
You made that point, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Councilwoman Snyder?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. So, to the, to the issue of enforcement that the gentleman spoke about, one option that we had not, had any feedback from the council on is the issue of social host liability. So, this is, this is social host liability. So, the idea here is that, for example, let's say Tom comes over to my apartment, and he decides to have a smoke. The, the code enforcement officer, neighbor calls the, the city code enforcement officer, knocks on the door, Tom hides the cigarette, flushes it down the toilet, and we open the door, and Tom says, it was Jared, Jared, and I said, no, it was Tom. And the code enforcement officer says, well, I can't, I can't figure out which one it was, so we can't cite anybody. What social host liability is, is that if it's my apartment, if I'm in control of the property, it means that I'm responsible for all of the activity that's going on inside. So, if, if I invite Tom over, and Tom decides to have a smoke, it's my, my responsibility to say, hey, Tom, you can't do that here. And if the code enforcement officer comes and sees that, smells the smoke in the room, and I'm pointing at Tom, and Tom's pointing at me, and he says, well, it's your apartment, we were citing you, because you were responsible for, for making sure that the ordinance is enforced. And this is, this is the way, and so we use this in our noise ordinance, and I think maybe a couple of other places in the municipal code.
So, you don't have to see smoke, but you can smell the smoke?
Isn't it probable cause? You rolled down the window, the car smelled like pot. Come on. It's like, I think we need a starting point here, and see how this works. Let's try this at this point in time, and let's, we're working with the landlords here. I understand the gentleman's problem. How are you going to post the signs? We would try to work with the experts here in our audience on how to make that happen. I disagree with Ms. Schneider, I would not, I don't want to see this delayed any further. I would like to see us implement something that's workable, and we can work with the experts to implement this, and try to see how it's going to work.
I didn't say delay.
Well, I, sorry, if I misinterpreted, you said you'd like to, you know, get the more feedback from our audience members.
No, 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 I want our staff to work with them as we roll out the enforcement.
That's fine, I agree with that. So, that, that's the point that I'm at.
Absolutely not delaying.
Okay, I get, I think we get consensus here about landlords not being held, I mean, as long as they do their due diligence, that we not hold them to be responsible for enforcement?
One last question. When you're living in one of these units, and you can no longer smoke in them, you're going to go somewhere. So, I think the vice mayor talked about some, or maybe the mayor talked about someplace to go. If I'm using the Pete's Coffee in the residential units above it, I can no longer smoke, both because it's a food service area, so 20 feet, or 40 feet, or near them by 40 feet. Well, 40 feet away is the bicycle repair station on the corner of Magnolia and Hillcrest, or it's the two rows of parking on the Magnolia side of the parking lot. So, we have pushed smokers out into another public area. You guys have told me I can't talk about anything other than MFD, but what we have done is pushed smoking somewhere farther down the line. I don't want to hold this up any farther, but I think we need to come back and address it. If you go to the Magnolia parking lot today, you see mounds of cigarette butts. If you go into the streets, if you go onto La Cruz, or Poplar, or Willow, what you see where employees park out there, you see little mounds of cigarette butts. So, we need to come back and address that. And I would like to hear if my fellow council members are going to support coming back to the unintended consequences of pushing smoking away from residential areas, yay, but where is it going to go? They're going to go somewhere, and, and to be kind, until people, if we can encourage them to quit, they need a place where they can smoke and not feel like criminals. And yet, that's not part of this ordinance, so can we come back for that?
I, I support that. Vice Mayor, did you have?
Well, I think there was a question about, about designated smoking areas.
You can smoke in your car, according to the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I think that's fine. I don't, I don't think we should require a designated smoking area. I think many properties simply don't have the space for that, or the location, but I think if, if a property owner or a condominium building wants to designate a certain space, and it's not within a common area, or within 40 feet of the nearest unit, I think that's...
Well, I think, I think what we want to do is make sure there's an exemption allowed for designated smoking areas.
Well, I'm more concerned that I could get in my car and park right in front of Pete's Coffee and smoke.
Yeah.
I mean, that's my more concern, that smoke's going straight up to the apartment, because it's legal to smoke in your car.
Yeah, we don't want, we don't want to push the smoking elsewhere.
I mean, I think that's preferable than doing it on the sidewalk. I think at some point, you know, we kind of.
Okay, we're getting into weeds, folks.
I feel that car is parked in front of your home.
So, do we agree that we should have an exemption in the ordinance for a designated smoking spot in the, in the multifamily dwellings?
Do we have a designated smoking part of the ordinance at this point in time?
So, currently, the ordinance does not allow for designated smoking areas.
I think it could come to the landlords.
Yeah, but right now, the way it works is there's no smoking at all in what we're going towards.
So, my, my concern is on this element here. So, if there is a private property owner that is only dealing with their property and, say, one unit, and they have chosen that multimillion-dollar investment, because that's what it is here, that they want to allow that, we would hope that in some way, shape, or form, that it's a concealed area, as in the airport, that they are permitted to do something like that, instead of impacting their neighbors. So, my question to legal counsel is here, if, as Councilmember Schneider noted, the person behind me is in their backyard smoking away, and it's going, is that a nuisance that I could report? Or how does the nuisance aspect of this, if there is such a one?
So, are we talking about a backyard that's within 40 feet of a multi-unit residence?
Well, let's say a two-unit condo, something like that, but they, you have a shared backyard. I, I'm just asking, I'm not saying that we have to put this in here at this point in time, but is there a current ordinance that lets somebody report? To me, that would be a nuisance.
Yeah, so I believe it's drafted, if this person is smoking in the yard of a multi-unit residence, within 40 feet of the residence, that would be a violation of the ordinance, and that could be reported to the city.
Is there any nuisance, there's no nuisance provision? So, I say, so there's nothing in the ordinance that defines it as a nuisance, I believe, or grants any right? You have common law nuisances, so if someone is, you know, just if they were, I don't know, roasting pigs in their backyard under your window every night, you could just sue them for, for a private nuisance. And so, I suppose if there was enough cigarette smoke, that you could convince a judge that that was worthy of a, of sustaining a lawsuit. But there's nothing in the ordinance that grants that, that's...
Yeah, but that, that was one of the options. So, we would, we would define smoking outside of your ordinance, or outside of a, a unit, like the roasting of the pig.
Right.
So, you wouldn't have to go through all.
You make it easier for them to prove their case.
Right.
So, question, so should we enact this ordinance, protecting the landlords once they've done a certain set of things? People living in a multi-unit facility will have more protections than people living in a single-family dwelling unit.
That's correct.
Okay. Just to make that clear, because the house next door to me would have eight kids smoking dope, coming straight into my mother with COPD and asthma. So, MF, MFDs, MUDs will have more protection than single-family homes, which I find disappointing, which is another thing I'd love to come back and address in the future.
We should look at that, I agree. Vice Mayor.
Well, I think the concern is that the, the density and the, you know, number of people within a relatively small area is a concern, and I think we have to start somewhere, and I think this is a very good step.
Bring it back.
Okay. Councilwoman Oliva, did you have?
So, if it's going to be written in the lease, and it's not going to be allowed within 40 feet, and you have to have a no smoking, this does exempt owners?
No. No, 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 no. What it says is that they're not, they're not responsible for, they're not responsible for enforcing the ordinance, as long as they do their diligence.
So, the, the.
I don't understand why, why you, I mean, the whole thing is, you didn't want, you didn't want the owners to be liable.
I'm talking about the owners of a condominium and a multi-unit housing.
Yes.
Facility.
Yes.
In that case, they're the social host, right? They, they would be liable as the occupant of the unit.
Time out.
Regardless of, if they're the owner or the...
Legal counsel threw in this social host thing, which is not before us presently. You would, is, was it as an option, but it's not in the current ordinance?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, so, let's be careful here as we go down this path. Now, I think Councilmember Oliva has taken this to a second level here, when you're talking about private property owners, and how it would apply if they are in the dwelling, and it's, you know, one, two units, that kind of thing. So, I understand the impact on the surrounding units, which we are trying to prevent. I'm curious, legally speaking, how we are able to enforce something like that when somebody has bought the property and lives there? Now, it's a private property owner that occupies the property.
It would be the same as any other illegal activity performed within the home, so if you're, if you're smoking, if you're doing illegal drugs in your house, you could, you can be arrested and prosecuted for that. There are constitutional protections and things like that about getting into, inserting houses, but it's the same as any other crime. If you commit a murder in your house, the fact that you're in your house doesn't protect you.
Unless you're the president, right? Just because he made that comment, okay, I threw it in. Okay, well, it's going to be an issue, I think, but I'm willing to try this as it currently exists. And like I said, we can bring this back, and hopefully, we can work with the wonderful speakers that have been here tonight, to make this something that really has a positive impact, health-wise, for the community.
Okay, so, do we have consensus that, what is the consensus here? I don't, I'm, I'm, make sure staff has the directions from the council. So, staff, do you have an understanding of what the council wants?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, it sounds like the, the council's moving in the direction as the current ordinance, draft ordinance is written, with no changes on any of the additional issues that were identified. So, no private right of action, no extended liability, so maintain the ordinance as it is written and drafted.
So, we, I think, there was some discussion about designated smoking areas, I don't know that we.
No, that was, that was...
That would be to come back in the future.
No, I mean, I, I, if we can do it today, that'd be nice, to exempt designated smoking areas. So, in other words, if, if the owner, or if the owners of the property, or the HMO says, you know what, let's put, we want to put a designated smoking area and allow people to smoke, but it's not exempted, it's, there's no provisions allow that, because the ordinance right now says there's no smoking at all in the building. So, if you provide, like, if we said, okay, there's an exemption for a, a, isolate its place with no, you know, connection to ventilation, and a law that won't affect the rest of the building, then that would, that could be exempted, that area could be exempted.
Well, we're sort of going down a rabbit hole here, but that opens up the possibility of removing a common area to put in a designated.
And that's up to them. No, no, we're not requiring it. We're giving them an option. So, if they want to do that, then they can do it, but then it'd be, and it would be exempt. We're not saying you have to do it.
I think that would be a net negative then for the...
Okay, I brought this up, and I apologize, because I actually don't want to see designated smoking areas. I'm just trying to be practical, because we're going to have de facto in downtown area, not maybe another apartment building somewhere else, but we're going to have de facto smoking areas. As the gentleman said here, Lincoln Circle is going to use the far side of the parking lot by the tennis courts. You know, that'll be 40 feet away. So, I am not saying we should look at it in this ordinance. I think that this is something that we should do some more thinking about, reach out with the experts, and figure out how do they deal with this stuff, as we look at other issues that need to be fixed, and come back at some later date on this. But, and that will give us time to get this ordinance in place, start working on the enforcement mechanisms, any guidelines, any signage, all of the steps to actually enact this, and then come back in the future.
I don't think we're approving it tonight, so I think we have one more.
I think we are.
I think we're, we're, there's not...
That's not what I heard. I heard Brad say that we're coming.
You've already, you've already approved the ordinance, this was supposed to be a second reading, but we're kicking the second reading out to the next.
We may further change it, so you just approve it in this version, then you'll, it'll come up the final approval next time.
So, it'll come back to us in two weeks?
Right.
And, so, sorry, I opened that can of worms on designated areas.
No, no, I like that idea.
It's just, it's, not that I like the idea, it happens anyway.
Well, I think it's practical.
Can we ask?
And, and, and association owners also requested that too. Okay, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Oliva.
Can I have one request, though? Can I get a definition of CCNRs in there, and how this would affect CCNRs?
So, that's where I was going to leave my next, my next comment to. We've established that we're going to have the landlords put in writing in multi-unit buildings on the lease, no smoking, and they're going to post a sign. But when it comes to HOAs where it has ownership, we should let the HOAs vote in their own...
No.
Yes, they should. It's their...
Wait, 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 I'm like, don't interrupt, let, Councilwoman Oliva finish her.
Let them determine how they want their own building. The HOAs, they can have a vote of who, of their residents to how they want to deal with the smoking in their buildings.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
I strongly disagree with that. I think the, the main reason why we're here is because of condominiums. I think, and I would imagine the vast majority of apartment buildings, it's already prohibited. A landlord does not want their tenant smoking and creating smoke damage in their unit, so this really affects condominiums, I think. And we've heard from one resident that, who promoted this, that they've tried to change the HOA requirements, and have been unsuccessful at prohibiting smoking. So, while I, I understand your concern for private property rights, I think what trumps that is the private property right of the person next door to not have smoke coming in through their vent.
I don't think it trumps anything. It's, I think it's not our decision. I think they chose to be part of this HOA, and let them run their HOA. I'm not promoting the smoking, whether it's a right of smoking or not smoking. Everybody should be protected, I'm all on board with that. But what I don't, what I have a problem with, is we're infringing an ordinance that we, number one, can enforce, and number two, in a, in a facility that we have no part of, let them work that out.
So, we, we can enforce this.
Councilmember Oliver, with all due respect, we have a litter ordinance, and we have a hard enough time enforcing that.
Okay, so we have, we have right here in the ordinance, any person violating any of the provisions in this chapter is guilty of an infraction. That doesn't mean, that doesn't matter if you're a tenant, or if it's an owner-occupied unit.
I'm talking enforcement.
Yeah, okay, okay, we're going to go around circles on that. Yeah, okay, okay, we're going to go around circles on that. So can I give Councilwoman Papin an opportunity, please? Did you, you said something?
On the CCNR subject. I forgot now.
Okay.
Okay, I strongly agree with the Vice Mayor here. The CCNRs, my guess is that most CCNRs haven't been updated in decades. I know that mine in Mountain View that went into action, or into effect in 1988, is finally looking at updating itself to all of the code changes that have happened, you know, federal, state, and local code changes. I do not think we leave it in the hands of HOAs, who may or may not be controlled by a handful of people. So, no, I think that this, this is exactly what the Vice Mayor said. This is for condominium and townhome owners who have no other recourse but this ordinance to have clean air.
And my experience is that, you know, we're talking about public health here, we have to take a stance. I think that's more important than your property rights, the same reason why, you know, you don't get, we don't want a sewage, I mean, a hazardous waste treatment center across the street from residents, you know, this is public health issues. So, and it's a property right, they can do whatever they do with their property, right? So we have, we have planning commission and zoning laws to, to make sure that we keep the public health and people safe. So, no, I think that this is important ordinance in this, that protects people from, I mean, people can't protect themselves from smoke. If somebody's smoking in your, next door, they can't protect themselves. There's no way they can protect themselves. So, and then I've known, and I, my HOA, people come up and bully the directors, and they, they might be a smoker and say, hey, and then, and they totally bully the, you know, the board. So, no, I don't, I don't have, I think this is a tool that's really, that's really needed. I don't, I don't, I don't trust HOAs to be able to, even though they want to do it, I don't trust they'll be able to do it, because I don't think that they, they feel that they're going to be support, they have enough support to do it. So I think this provides that. So I think this, this, the staff, are they satisfied with the comments from the council?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I mean, I would like for you to take a motion and a vote to, you know...
To waive the reading of this version and approve it for, for final action.
Okay, can, can we, can we, can I add the, the exemption for a designated smoking area?
We'll waive the reading, and then we'll go on that next one.
Well, you're going to delay it for...
Well, I just like to, I mean, we can't, we can still put in the ordinance for the next reading, right?
Yeah, no, if you make the change tonight...
That's what I'm saying. Can we make that change tonight? Do I have support for that tonight?
If there's support for it.
Mayor, would you mind a designated smoking area if we're using Broadway as an example, because it's got so many mixed used properties, commercial, restaurant, and that, that this could be a designated smoking area, could be looked at in conjunction with looking at what's currently happening for the employees who smoke downtown and visitors who smoke downtown? We could look at all of those and deal with a designated smoking area for all of the types of issues that we have downtown.
No, I'm only talking about the multi-unit...
Yeah, I'm, I share the concern that the Vice Mayor has, is you may be giving up common space, common area, public outside area...
No, no, we're not requiring it. We're just saying, if you want to, then you have the option. But if we'd say, right now, they have no option.
But we don't even have design guidelines for what a place like that would have to be. Would it have to be like a cone of silence that smoke can't leak out of? We're just not quite there yet.
I think you're being counterproductive, Mr. Mayor, at this point in time. The ordinance is written.
Well, I'm just, I'm just afraid we're just pushing smoking out to...
Well, like I said, people can come back if they want to petition the council in some way, shape, or form that's not going to negatively impact the health of the surrounding...
You can always say you can, but it makes it harder.
And, sorry, through the chair, I think it's, it creates the possibility that this designated smoking area, smoke from, you know, depending on, it could be five feet away from the nearest unit or something, you know, we don't know where it is.
No, no, it has to be, yeah, it's not up to us, it's up to them, okay. Anyway, and Councilwoman Snyder is correct, it has to have certain requirements that, to ensure that the smoke doesn't get to, and affect other people, so. All right, so I have a first and a second, is that correct? Voting on whatever is being presented.
Ordinance says presently.
The ordinance presented to you.
Yeah, can you please read, Brad, can you read what, what your understanding of the council desire is? And Vice Mayor, might answer your question.
Right, so the, the direction, as I understand it, is to accept the changes that were directed back on the 25th that have been put into the red line version that's before you this evening. And then the only other thing that I was hearing was that there was the provision where the landlords would need to put into their leases the prohibition of smoking within the units.
It's already in there.
That's already in there.
Okay, and then after that, I did not hear consensus on any of the other options.
I think...
I made a motion for the, the ordinance as it currently exists. I have a second.
Waiving the reading.
All for the vote.
Waive the reading. Move to the next meeting.
Okay, is that, is that your understanding?
All for the question.
Okay, I just make sure the motions are correct. Okay, your votes, please. Okay, everybody likes their colors, okay.
Item number 15 passed with a vote of four to one, with Councilmember Oliva dissenting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Council, for, for your work on this issue.
Spirit of the cluster.
Okay, new business appointment of a voting delegate and alternate for the League of Cities. I am attending, but I prefer to have somebody else be the voting, because I need to get back for another meeting.
I would propose that the mayor be the designee, and then there's an alternate that can vote, so we only have two people going, so...
Yeah, Councilwoman Snyder, are you going?
Yeah, I'm happy to. I should be there the whole time.
Okay, um, okay, I'll be at a primary, is that what you guys want?
Yeah, you'll be at the primary because you're the mayor, and then you're not there.
I certainly don't want to be listed on here, so, considering it, but...
So what is your preference?
No, I, I'm just, just...
Now, who do you want to be the delegate for?
Councilmember Snyder said she'll be there the whole time, so...
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
What about you?
You're going to be there the whole time, right?
Yeah, I'll be there the whole time.
Well, I'm voting for both, I just thought the mayor's the...
I'm happy either way. I'm sure that the mayor and I can figure out who's going to be there. I'm not at the Conference Hotel, I'm down the street, though. So that would just be the only thing.
As long as you can be there till 2:00 in the afternoon.
Okay, we'll just check in with each other.
Friday, lunch, is where the votes are.
Right. And then it generally ends about 2:00.
I've never gone to one, so I don't know the process.
Yeah, but it could. So, okay, I will, we'll play it by ear, but the two of us will be the delegates, then. Okay, all right, do we need a vote for that, or are we just going to?
Yeah.
Do we need a vote for that?
Sure, motion.
Yeah, it's in action.
Is cleared aboard, or is that, is that the same?
No, I just, we just get...
Okay, your votes.
Item number 16 passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you. So this is time for council comments. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Oliva, would you like to start?
Very brief, I took a little holiday. Both my brothers have a birthday on the 3rd and 4th of July, and we had a lot of family time, so I'll pass.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I don't think I've had anything since our last council meeting, so I think I will pass as well.
Councilwoman Snyder?
Okay, most of my committee assignments are front-loaded, so, first of all, congratulations to Angela Lewis for our Director of Administration for her first negotiation with the Teamsters, and well done on that. SFO roundtable, we were actually told about the changes in the Lyft Uber drivers, but it didn't dawn on us what the ramifications might be. I bring that up because right now the airport has released a notice of project for some significant construction work happening more on the San Bruno end, or affecting the airport landing neighborhood and Lamina Park School. So I have been working with city manager, community development director Brad Meisner, and Deputy Director Key Lim on a letter that will be going in tomorrow with a number of issues and concerns. Then Millbrae Culture Arts had to cancel their meeting last night because of quorum. I understand that there were applicants, but they couldn't make the interview meeting, so I think, I asked, but I don't, Elena, correct me, if you still are thinking of being on Culture Arts, you can still fill out an application and be interviewed by the subcommittee, which I believe is Councilwoman Papin and Mayor Lee. Please, we are desperate to get two more people, where they've been operating on three out of five seats, which means all three have to be in attendance, or we do not have quorum. And their, Culture Arts is actually rolling out many, many projects right now, so please, if you care about Culture Arts, fill out that application and make the interview night. Emergency Services, last week, the county is doing a five-day exercise at Mills High School. It's an active shooter drill. It'll be running from June, July 29th to August 2nd. There'll be two shifts, a morning shift and an afternoon shift on all five days. There is one day that elected officials have been invited, and I think it's the 31st, but I need to check on that, and as soon as I get it confirmed, I'll send it to the city manager. They like to invite elected officials, and I would imagine school board officials, other, other people that are involved in this, to come and actually participate and get a feeling for it. They have also asked me, so I'm actually the lead in trying to find young people, meaning mature high school students, mature teenagers, to participate in at least one. You don't have to do all 10, but one would be great, they're three-hour shifts. You will be, you'll be in makeup, you'll be in moulage makeup. And the reason they're asking for mature teenagers is, it's going to be gunshots. It's going to be gunshots at a school environment, and it's intended to make it as realistic as possible to help the first responders who are coming in, as well as the administration and teachers, to get them to have that. And I am sorry to actually ask our youth to have to do that kind of thing, but this is an exceptional opportunity here in Millbrae. For everybody who lives around Mills High School, you are likely to hear gunshots on that, and you're likely to see first responder vehicles. I don't know if they all operate out of the parking lot. So anyway, July 29th to August 2nd. If you're interested in being a volunteer and you're a youth, I'm, I'm your go-to person. Please contact me, and we can get you set up for that. And then this Thursday, we have Chief Kunkel in the yard. We're having our first meeting to get ready, get ready for Millbrae's first get-ready. We don't have a title for it yet, we don't know the full scope of it, but it's to get the people of Millbrae and the businesses of Millbrae to be thinking about what happens in a fire, and an earthquake, or in a flood, or thankfully, something we've never had is an airplane crash. How to get your go-kits ready, how to make sure that you've created defensible space around your home, how to make sure that you, if you haven't earthquake-retrofitted, what you might be able to do for your home. So we don't have a date yet, it will be in October, which is a very busy month in, in Millbrae, many, many events. But 1:30 this Thursday at the community center on, on that, and I am looking forward to having an updated community garden meeting. We haven't had one in a while. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things, first and foremost, and we may have mentioned this before, but I'd really personally like to thank all the city staff for assisting in the MTC bus tour, along with Google for loaning us an electric bus, for the 57 people that were able to tour our county. All the cities spoke for themselves as to what is happening in their cities, and it was very enlightening to see what direction we're moving in. Conference call yesterday is that we need to start proposing to the Metropolitan Transportation Committee big projects. Enough with the bike paths that we always are getting little bits of money for, but we need to take the bigger approach, particularly in Millbrae, where we're looking for traffic studies, parking studies, all kinds of things that are impacting our daily lives, plays into also the issues we're currently dealing with, with SFO. I do appreciate staff posting as soon as they know things, so that our residents know these things, and they're not going back and forth on next door 20 different times, and everybody's guessing what's going on. If staff has a meeting along those lines, please keep us, the residents, as informed. Also, as Councilmember Schneider mentioned, if gunshots are going to be fired anywhere within the city, you should be posting that information, so people are not panicking, and people know what's going on. So please do so on that front. City staff was wonderful on the bus tour, just putting that whole thing together, amazing, I owe you dinner. I ask that city staff remove the pictures from our specific plan of architecture, which this council has clearly shown an opinion is not acceptable. Architects are opening up that specific plan and picking out the box architecture that is all over South San Francisco, and we don't want to see it in Millbrae. So just take a big plan and cross those pictures out of our specific plan, please. Ms. Schneider has proposed, or put in her application for the MTC, I think it's the Waste Management Committee, which will be voting on Thursday. Congratulations, it looks like there's two applicants, and you're going to be one of them. Appreciate the earthquake preparedness, and also have asked staff to get some data on what the current monthly parking passes are at the Bart Station. The reason for that is that the Dublin Station is currently asking for funding to put up a 500-space garage. We are removing 500 spaces presently, so what will the impact be if there are, I don't know how many, monthly parking spaces? So I look forward to receiving that information and sharing it with the council. Hopefully, we know which way we're going on that front. Thank you to everybody. Movie night's been great. Our next, I believe it's the last, what, of the month? Friday of the month? Or...
Third.
Movie night?
Third.
Third Friday of the month? What are we showing this month?
Dumbo.
Dumbo?
The new one, not the old one.
The new one?
Yeah, and another, yeah.
Okay, very, I'll bring my Kleenex.
Don't spoil it.
Don't spoil it, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Snyder, you had it?
I'm sorry, I forgot to add, the other thing that came from Emergency Services, PG&E gave a presentation on their, I'm going to call it, on their outage program, and they announced the areas that they're most concerned about, and one of the areas that they're most concerned about is east of Pacifica. And I'm sitting next to Mayor Medina from San Bruno, and needed to remind them that we are east of Pacifica, although there is that lake in between there. So we've been pretty quiet. I wasn't given any directions, one way or the other, on the PG&E outlet in case of very windy days. What this means, on very windy days, they have a process now of turning off power, so that power lines don't spark and don't create fires. But I noticed that Mayor Licardo from San Jose has recently been protesting that it's an action taken too far. But given that, in my knowledge, we've never had a fire like that in Millbrae, we've never had a fire in the hills behind us, west of us, I, I am personally in support of them doing whatever action it takes to prevent fires, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Unless I get other direction from council.
Yes.
Sorry to report that Senator Weiner has brought his SB 50 in through another number. Currently, it's SB 592, which will do the same thing about removing local controls, land use controls, parking limitations. The impact is just as negative as it previously was when it had a different name. So I propose that staff present the current language to the council, so that we can come to some agreement in opposing that legislation as quickly as possible. And then also like to note that Governor Gavin Newsom has announced the appointments of David S. Kim as the Secretary of State Transportation Agency, and Brian Anis as the Chief Financial Officer for the California High-Speed Rail Authority. And I have requested that staff no longer waste their time going to these High-Speed Rail Authority meetings. For five years, all they've talked about is wasting our money and our staff time. Let's just put in our request that it's underground and go from there, instead of everybody wasting their time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so on some happy notes, I'd like to congratulate Kacha Plumbing for, was it 10th anniversary? No, 40th anniversary. 40th anniversary coming up. Congratulations, started from James Kacha, and it's been carried on by Gino and Anthony, thank you, Kacha.
And Anu Baby.
And Anu Baby, which we mentioned last meeting. Dominic Kacha, thank you. And also, congratulations to Joe and Jenny Chen, the marriage of their, their son, Kevin Chen, to Joyce Lee. Just, that's, you know, we like to hear some good news. Okay, so again, I just want to reiterate, on July 18th, there's a traffic calming workshop, and I know there was a lot of complaints that I received, and I'm sure other council members have, about the traffic in Millbrae. So this is your opportunity to voice your concern, July 18th, Chambers, 6 o'clock, is right, 6 o'clock? Is that right, Tom? 6 o'clock?
Correct, 6:00 PM.
Okay, and then on July 11th, don't forget, this Thursday, Beats and Brews, we're closing off half the streets on Broadway, it's going to be a fantastic time. Thank you to McKinsey Brady for making that all happen. Are we going to have our new stage by then?
Yes.
Okay, so the other thing I want to let you know is that McKinsey Brady, our Recreation Director, or I mean, has, is able to help us procure a stage, a portable stage, that we can, we will rent out to various groups and cities, and it's going to, and it's going to help facilitate a lot of community events, so thank you very much. And also, thank you Chief and Tom Williams for meeting with the Millbrae Community Cultural Committee and giving them update and discussing Neighborhood Watch Program. So I think August 25th, are they still doing that? They're still having a program or not?
August 25th for the.
Neighborhood safety updates and.
Correct, yeah, no, that's still happening. We just pulled it off the agenda, because the private company was no longer requesting the exemption, because they're not working with a nonprofit.
So as we've mentioned, that we have heard watch programs are really critical for the safety of our citizens in many respects. One, it helps your neighbors, in case of earthquake, you can help them out, you know, because you know your neighbors. Number two, the best, the best way that the police can, the city can, can help itself is that their neighbors watch out for each other in terms of suspicious activities that goes around the neighborhood. They're the best people to know, because they know which cars belong in the neighborhood, they know who the normal people are. I could tell you, this happened twice for me, that my neighbor was able to thwart two burglaries in my neighborhood, because she noticed those people. So that was because of Neighborhood Watch Program I started. So we're going to try to, MCC and with the help of Chief Kunkel, is going to try to help neighborhoods, neighborhoods organize their Neighborhood Watch Programs as a safety and, yeah, safety program. Let's see, and also congratulations again to the Public Works for getting the $3 million grant for pedestrians and walkways around the specific plan. We were the highest rated for, and highest priority for that grant, so congratulations on getting that grant, well, job well done, as you always, you guys are always continuing to do. By the way, I have a question. Do you guys, are we done with the pipe extension, the sewer, stormwater, I mean, is it sewer water work on Broadway? We're all done, right?
Just yes or no?
Yes or no?
Or back?
You don't have to come out, just say yes or no.
We are not done with the water project yet, we are in the design phase right now, and the work should be done later this year, with the street paving happening in early 2020.
Okay, because I had some comments about people wondering when we're going to fix the road, make it look nice again. Anyway, I don't know. So, okay, and also I'd like to thank Chief Kunkel for his work with the Tragedy at Tan Fran Shopping Center, he responded with our former chief, Ed Barberina. Ed, I can't believe he has two shootings in San Bruno, just incredible work that they've done there. And also, I guess to thank staff and Chief Kunkel for your work with the transportation network companies, the Uber and Lyft. We continue to work on that issue, we have not been seeing, there are some things on Nextdoor saying that we're sitting on our hands, and we've been working on this for months, and this has been forced upon the city. This is not something that the city developed or city did, so this city's trying to respond. And we'd like to thank our partners, the cities of Burlingame and San Bruno, as well as San Francisco Airport and Lyft. And we haven't had, Uber wasn't, hasn't come to the table, and we're hoping to get them to the table soon. We're looking at all sorts of issues, engineering, administrative, as well as fines and impact fees, whatever we can do to effect a change that will alleviate the congestion, because congestion's not only an impact on our citizens personally, but also on commerce, and it affects us, public safety as well. And also, I'd like to just kind of put a primer for our council, that I'm also suggesting that the three cities, four, three or four cities surrounding San Francisco Airport, and San Francisco Airport should go into a traffic study to look at the impacts of these TNCs, as well as the growth of new housing that we're all trying to put in our cities. So with that, with those two mitigating issues, it's going to cause a lot of traffic issues, and we can't be doing this piecemeal, we need a big plan to try to address all the engineering and administrative efforts that, to coordinate all of that. And other than that, it's been a kind of a slow, slow month, and I don't have anything really new to report, other than thank my council for the hard work they've been doing, and I guess we have one more meeting in July, so I'd like to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.